Well, good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June Kansas State Board of Education Meeting and call the meeting to order. As you can see, this meeting is being conducted virtually once again this month. We are hoping, and hoping with all hope, that we will be able to be in person in July, but we are doing social media distancing today via social media. So we will have this meeting livestreamed on YouTube so the public may observe and listen. So would like to thank, I see that all board members are present and accounted for. I'd like to thank everybody for being here and like to welcome those listening online via the YouTube channel. I appreciate folks being able to take some time today to listen to our meeting. It is a little bit interesting to go via technology. I was sitting here trying to work on my computer and getting my iPad up and just, you know, all sorts of great fun things like that. So it's interesting. So we would like to thank everybody for listening in today. I'd like to take a moment and read the mission of the Kansas State Board of Education. It is to prepare students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision for Kansas is to lead the world in the success of each student. I'd like to, at this time, turn it over to the vice chair for just a moment for a comment. She and I visited the other day and she asked to make a comment, take personal privilege and make a comment today. So vice chair, walk. Get her unmuted. Well, you were Janet. Try it again.
Okay, how about that?
Good. Thank you.
Good. Okay, sorry. Thank you. I appreciate that. The recent death of George Floyd has left us stunned, sad, angry, and bewildered. The pain, excuse me, the pain our black communities continue to endure has to end, and it starts with each of us. The State Board of Education established the vision, Kansas leads the world in the success of each student. And we mean that, each student. Racism has no place in our education system. Our black students and teachers and all people of color deserve the same basic rights as anyone else: to be safe, to be valued, and to receive equal opportunities to succeed. We know that we don't have all the answers. We know that we have made and will continue to make mistakes, but we are committed to doing and being better. We are committed to listening to and learning from those who continue to experience racial inequality. We are committed to continuing our focus on social-emotional development in the classroom to teach personal responsibility, acceptance, tolerance, respect, and community. And we are committed to the education of each of Kansas' nearly 500,000 students, just as we are committed to our own education. We are proud of the hard work Kansas schools are doing to change the way we educate students. We have more students graduating high school, more students prepared, not just academically, but socially and emotionally, and more students leaving high school with the plan for their futures. There are so many good things happening in Kansas schools today, but it isn't enough. And we won't achieve our vision of leading the world in the success of each student until racial inequality is addressed and eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you, vice chair. I'd now ask that you join us for a moment of silence. Now, if the commissioner could please put up the flag on the screen and if everybody would please stand and let's recite together. If you could unmute all of the board members, please, and we will say the pledge of allegiance. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much, Randy. A pledge of allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as we're all.
Thank you very much. It's a little difficult with the delay, but thank you, board members, for joining along. Okay, now we take a look at the agenda. We have an agenda, the agenda for today. Do you have any addition? Okay, there we go. Thank you. I got unmuted. Okay, Mr. Roberts. Just a second, Steve. Okay, you're good.
Thank you. I appreciate what my colleague from Wyandotte County had to say about changing the way we do things. So I would like to dispense with today's agenda. I would like my fellow board members to consider that it might be a better idea to hear from one another instead of the folks that the department and the commissioner think we should hear from. I think we have enough talent and drive and desire among the 10 of us to make more progress today on what we need to do than to hear from the folks who have been working in the department to sort of further their own agenda. So I would move that we reject today's agenda and basically have a workshop today among ourselves. That's my motion.
Have a second? Okay, seeing no second. Michelle, seconds. Hey, all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Okay, it looks like two to eight. Mr. Roberts, what I would recommend is that that would probably be appropriate in workshop setting at some point in time in the near future. So we may look at a workshop setting for that type of discussion. Not that we don't need it, because we do, but I would recommend a workshop setting maybe on a Wednesday or a Wednesday afternoon. Okay, any other changes for the agenda? If not, I'd take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Jim McNeese, second by Dina Horst. Mr. Watson, question?
Madam Chair, you may want to consider an executive session on Wednesday. And on the end for personnel.
Yeah, I just have the agenda for today's meeting. We'll put that on for tomorrow when we have our meeting tomorrow. So thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for today's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, so it's nine to one with Steve Roberts opposing. Thank you. Okay, now I'd ask that we have a correction, any corrections or additions to the May minutes? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the May minutes? Okay, Mr. Porter, a second. Mr. Jones. Okay, we've had a motion and a second to approve the May minutes. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks like a 10-0 to me. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Commissioner Watson will be up for the commissioner's report. So welcome, Commissioner Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is great to see all of you. Wish we could see each other in person, but the condolences, Jim, to you and your family and recent loss of your mother-in-law. And Ben, it's good to see that you found a razor. We're appreciative of that, and you're looking good. Share with you my screen. And this, all guys, is the flag. You know, the events of the last several weeks and months have caused a great deal of stress on all of us. I think anxiety is certainly raining high. I don't think there's a day that goes by, certainly not a week, that you're not receiving phone calls, emails, texts, in some cases even handwritten letters. I know I still receive a few of those noting that you need to take some action on some event. I want to walk through some of those things with you and just acknowledge those. First of all, you know, all of you have been involved in some deep-seated work that I want to talk about today. While there won't be many things that'll be new, I'd like for us maybe to look at them through a different lens of the work that you have done and the work that we have to do that's still in front of us. I shared this with you many times. I think Mr. Roberts will remember this when we talk about, are we in the right forest? We're certainly working hard. Are we doing the right work? I'm going to ask you to think about this in two different ways today. To take a step back first so that we make sure that we can see the forest or the trees, and then a lot of today, we're going to be in the trees, looking at the detail work, especially as it relates to reopening schools tomorrow or through accreditation. But to take both a broad look and a detailed look as we go forward. And so I've shared this picture with you many times. I'm going to share lots of things with you. This vision that you put forward is so remarkable in so many ways. And today, you know, we'll be talking about why we have to lead the world. It's not just this egotistical trip that we're on about, you know, doing better than other people. It's a deep-seated belief that you have shared over and over and over, and quite frankly, enough people don't know about it. And so, you know, I don't know that we can't say it enough. It's the lead the world is because of each student and the need that you feel to value each student and make sure that he or she is successful in whatever they choose. I'm going to take you on a little walk in history because I love it so much and I think it speaks to us. I've shared this picture with you many times because, as you know, your vision, we've aligned that to a metaphor of going to the moon and how challenging that was in the 60s. This is the infamous photo, or famous photo, if you would, from Apollo 8 that was taken on Christmas Eve, 1968. It was taken, three astronauts that were circling the moon at that time, over 10 times, Jim Lovell, Bill Anders, and Frank Borman. And as you remember, because we've done it before, they quoted the Book of Genesis. And it was an uplifting moment on Christmas Eve. And then, what maybe isn't quite as famous, Lovell jokes even before quoting from Genesis to tell to America, Houston, please be informed, there is a Santa Claus. And there was a lot of hope. Walter Cronkite reports that. Now in today's air, you can Google it, you can find out about it. But what it doesn't say, while it speaks a lot to the metaphor of what we're going to be about, it doesn't speak to how divisive, how destructive, how much in a turmoil this country was in 1968. And so I'm going to weave a little bit of my own personal journey in this. I was a young man, very young, nine years old, looking up to middle school and high school students. Since I have vivid memories of not only my mother, who, a single mother raising two kids, my grandmother's recollection of this year, and watching middle school and especially high school students tell their tale. So I'd like to just share with you just a few things that make this year so interesting and maybe in such a parallel to what's going on today in America. In January, we had high tensions with Korea. Sound familiar? Except we weren't all that far removed from the Korean War. USS Plublow, which was a Navy intelligence ship, was captured by North Koreans. And you can see there, many of the members of the ship were held, 83 crew members in total, in a POW camp before the two countries finally negotiated their release. The very next week after this happened, the North Vietnamese and Vietcong now started during their Lunar New Year, what was then called the Tet Offensive, and overwhelms South Vietnam. We ended up winning that battle. But during that time, we had the largest number of Americans killed in war in any given week of 543. And TV captured this moment. For the first time, we saw war up close and personal, and many Americans, especially young Americans disliked what they saw. They took to the streets to protest. Sound familiar? And they protested this war so adamantly, and there was such a division between the people that went to fight the war and the people that didn't go fight the war, that there was another incident. And this incident took place just a few weeks later in a place called My Lai. It was called the My Lai massacre, where civilians were killed by American GIs. And again, if you remember that period, and if you don't, please study it, Americans were torn in half over whether to support the military or not support the military in the war in Vietnam. The president at the time sent troops to cities. We were burning cities. Many of the major cities were in chaos. President Johnson, governors, mayors ordered troops into the city to support local police and their efforts. The public was in opposition a lot to the war, and President Johnson, in March, announced he would not seek reelection for president. This all is happening in the first three months of 1968. And then one month later, after President Johnson announced he would not seek reelection, some young people made a trip to Memphis, Tennessee. This is Martin Luther King and Jesse Jackson and Ralph Abernathy and others outside the Lorraine Hotel as they're checking in. Within just a few moments, unfortunately, Dr. King was assassinated in early April 1968. And if you remember, those riots that were going on became highly intensified. Cities were burning. People were extremely angry. They didn't understand what was going on in America. And again, there was a lot of turmoil. Robert Kennedy, the brother of John Kennedy, announced he would run for president during that time, really to oppose the Vietnam War. This is a picture of him at the Ambassador Hotel in Los Angeles, late at night, where he had just won the California primary. And he had announced he was on to Chicago, which was the Democratic Convention, with the hopes of being the Democratic nominee for president. Several years ago, I had the opportunity to take my daughter to a volleyball camp in Malibu, and the Ambassador Hotel is very close, was very close to LA Airport. I had the opportunity to be there and actually be in that room. It's since been torn down, but it played an important role in history because shortly thereafter, he went through the kitchen and was assassinated in June of that same year, 1968. And once again, protests sprung out across the country. The Democratic National Convention was mired in Chicago with a lot of protesters and a lot of action by the police, and there was a lot of dissension at the convention that year going forward. In October, that fall, Tommy Smith and John Carlos finished first and third in the 200-meter sprint, went to the winner's stand to take their medals, and as the national anthem played, they gave a silent protest that had them stripped at the time of being a member of the US Olympic team. And again, this country divided on the actions that were done during that time. All this happened in 1968. And the interesting thing is, we think about this vision of each student, is that you have taken lots of actions. To say we haven't learned would be not true, but to say that there's a lot of parallels would be true. I want to take you through what you have done since you enacted this vision just a few years ago, because again, I think it's still not known to many people to the depth of which you took it. It's not a vision. It's that these pens that you wear every single day when you're out, that Kansans can, represent the hope and aspirations of each one of those children that we all serve. You know this? You said, here's the successful high school graduate, and here are the goals of the State Board of Ed. I want to walk you through just a few of those because I think it's important for people to understand. You said, guess what? Too many of our young people are not academically and cognitively prepared to do work as an adult, not just go to college, not just go to tech school, to have all opportunities available to them going forward. And so, so you said, bring us the highest standards, those things that we teach in the country. In 2009, Education Next gave the state of Kansas a D on the level of rigor that our standards have. By 2017, that same organization said, you now have an A. We're talking about the rigor of the standards, not the cut scores, the rigor of the standards going forward. In fact, you can see that they ranked Kansas sixth in the country in overall grade of the rigor of the state standards of which we would teach kids. People say, wow, are you, why would you do that? It's to ensure that each child, regardless of economic background, regardless of race or ethnicity, or like me, a single parent background, or whether they came from Western Kansas or Southeast Kansas or metro area or suburban area, had the opportunity and had the academic skills to go on. You followed that up by not only being number six in the country of the highest standards, you then set the highest scores possible in what would be the state assessments. There's Kansas. This is, so you could play a game, right? You could play a game. There's all the states. There's the NAEP proficiency line at 281, and you set levels three and four higher than that, the highest reading standards, cut scores in the country. Just take a look. If we were in Missouri, not to be critical of anyone, we would have a cut score that is 25 points lower. How many more students would be proficient if we simply lowered the bar? But it's not about that. It's about what is the academic standard that you need in reading to be successful if you want to go to Washburn Tech? If you want to go to Coffeyville Community College? If you want to leave the state and go to Creighton? What is that level that needs to occur? The same thing in mathematics. The highest cut scores in the country. And so some would say, set them too high. Set them too high. They're going to be hard to obtain. It wasn't to be hard to obtain or easy to obtain. It was that's the level that students are going to need academically to be successful. That was just the start because you knew the research said that academic and cognitive preparation alone wasn't going to make students successful. It had to be an important part, but it wasn't everything to make students successful. So one of the areas that you chose, when no other state was choosing it, you said, we have to be civically engaged. You did that because Kansans said that was important to us. And so look at those civic engagement proven practices of which we recognize schools and school districts. How about rigorous instruction in government, history, law, and democracy? Hopefully, my little recap of 1968 with some rigorous participation in that history. But look at proven practice number two. Incorporate discussion of current local, national, international issues and events in the classroom, particularly those that young people view as important in their lives. Young people and staff, our employees, your parents, people are speaking out to you about what's important, and we have to have that discourse going forward. Proven practice three, that will implement programs, provide students with opportunity to apply that learning. They'll offer extracurricular activities and promote activities for young people to get involved in their school and their community. We'll participate in student government. And finally, the sixth, encourage student participation in simulations and the democratic process. You said that's equally as important to being a successful young person as that academic achievement. Too often, though, when anyone calls you nationally, wants to know what Kansas is doing, do they start with, tell us about your civic engagement? My guess is they want to talk about your test scores. We have to frame the conversation differently. If we only look at the academic and cognitive achievement of which we are the highest standards, sixth highest standards and highest cut scores in the country, we have missed discussing what truly success is. Because as you know, you were the first state, as a state board, to adopt social and emotional standards, the first. You honor those schools that achieved that, schools of character, every year at the Board of Education, the state, the Board of, the Board of Brown versus Board of Education. That's where you honor those. Look what Castle said about Nationwide. This is the, this is the social and emotional group. Said only 36% of high school students across the country, this isn't in Kansas, said that their high school had done a great or pretty good job of addressing six of the seven key social-emotional concepts. What are those? See if those are applicable to a student's everyday life. Know how to get along or work with people different than you, understanding other people's feelings and viewpoints, know how to solve disagreements in positive ways, understanding your own emotions, and while you feel different emotions, well, if there's anything the last few months have taught us, is that our emotions have run high as we face challenges like we haven't faced in a long time. You know, the students over over 7,800 students said of the skills we need help with, there they are, sixth, ninth, 12th grade. And looked at conflict management was one of those skills that our students, this is Kansas students, said, you know what? We need help in managing that, and that's why we're going about doing this work. You know that You know, that Kansas, teachers and educators, over 9,000, said, here are the skills that make people important if we only had to choose one, integrity, empathy, problem solving, perseverance. And we've seen this wheel a lot, lots of times, but we are going to have to do better at teaching all of these skills. Teachable moment that I know all of you feel passionate about. Certainly, individual plans of study and high school graduation, we could talk about for hours, but I want to focus on something that again, no other state in the nation is doing, and that is taking a look at how do students do when they leave high school? I've shared this chart with you, it's Pittsburgh, Kansas, but I, I only share it as an example and I want you, we focused on this many, many times, but we still, I don't think, have people hear us. You said, look, we've got to have 95% of our kids graduate high school with all those skills we just mentioned. We have to have 70 to 75% at a minimum go on to post-secondary, but you did something no other state has done. That, that's remarkable. You took into account the factors in every school district that makes it difficult to do that work. They're called the risk factors. They take into account poverty, race, ethnicity, mobility, special education, and they noted that in Pittsburgh, Kansas, we would only predict them to be somewhere between 31 and 34% successful and they're at 39, they're beating their risk factors. Because they have high risk factors, high risk factors. So does Kansas City, Kansas. They have high risk factors and they're outperforming those risk factors. Our largest school system, Wichita, has high risk factors, lots of poverty, lots of mobility, lots of students of color, and they are outperforming their risk factors. While, while you held every school district accountable statistic wise, you also said, are you beating your risk factors and doing well within your community? And so, as we think about this work of the success of each student, know that you've laid the groundwork for institutions, schools to do a lot of work. But I, I've had many conversations like you have had over the past several weeks and months with high school friends, college friends, colleagues, our, our staff here, many of you, lots of parents. I will tell you, people are hurting. They're confused, they're looking to us for leadership. One of them said to me, and I think it's so appropriate, Randy, you know, we're, we're not all in the same boat. We all are in different boats. Sometimes it's hard to even recognize the boats that we're in, because we're all in different situations, but we're all in the same storm. And they're looking to us to do this on a personal level, not just an institutional level, but a personal level. So Madam Chair, I want to thank you, the state board. I think the work that you are embarked upon is the right work. It's, we have to do better, we can do better, and with your guidance and assistance, I'm confident that we will. With that, I would stand for any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Randy. As soon as we get back to, there we go, full screen. Thank you, Randy, we appreciate, it's always good to review that and also very interesting to put it in the context of history. We certainly, some of us lived through that era of the 60s, some of you probably did not, but some of us did and remember it well. And it was a tumultuous time, much like things that are going on nowadays. Any questions at this time for Randy, board members? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Commissioner, were you able to see a little article regarding Mitch Daniels' commencement address at Purdue that I sent you?
Yes, sir, I was.
Do you want to relate the little story about Commander Armstrong, or should I?
Please, go ahead, sir.
Well, Mitch Daniels was addressing his, he's the president, or I guess president of Purdue, he used to be governor of Indiana, most of you know, so it was by virtual meeting. I mean, he was in a empty auditorium, doing it electronically. He said it was not only the 150th anniversary of Purdue, but it was the 50th anniversary of the moon landing. So he said that one of their more famous alumnus, probably the most famous alumnus was Neil Armstrong, he was a Boilermaker. So Mitch Daniels related that in his later years, Commander Armstrong got to telling really corny, lame jokes about the moon. And when people would fail to laugh, he would add, I guess you had to be there. Just wanted to share that with you. I would ask you, Mr. Commissioner, if, if you think that there's a handful of things we could do as a board, so that in the year 2040, let's say, people around the country with school-aged children will think seriously about moving to Kansas, because we truly do it so much better than other folks. We're not encumbered by the things that usually hold us back, job security notions and things like that. Could you speculate briefly here, sir, on what three or four things this board could do to lay the groundwork so that in the year 2040, people with school-aged children think seriously about moving to Kansas? Because chances are, they'll be able to work anywhere. We're going to be doing a lot of electronic work over the web, so why not live in Kansas where the schools are the best? Sir?
Oh, thank you, Steve. I, I think what's really hard is that we're going to have to be our best advocate in saying what we're doing that's different. And I think what, at the, in the day, I had a great conversation this morning with Don Gifford about things, social studies. Don, as you know, is our educational consultant for social studies. And I said, I never thought as a nine-year-old in 68, we would still be revisiting this in 2020. He said, at the end of the day, institutions sometimes can change, but people have to change. And I think, Steve, an answer to your question, we have, we have embraced by asking Kansans to do this work. And I think when you do that, whether it's, we'll talk all day tomorrow about reopening school, with the continuous learning or standards work, when you engage and you know people and you say, we can have these difficult discussions, we can have them with open, open, honest, integrity and empathy, and we can listen. And deeply listening is, is what I think we need to do. I, I just firmly believe we can accomplish everything that we've set out to do. My daughter was going to leave Kansas as soon as she got out of high school. She's back living in her hometown, teaching in her hometown. And I think they're going to, and married, married someone from her hometown, interesting enough, even though they didn't date in high school. I'm optimistic, Steve, and I'm optimistic because the people of Kansas, I think, can do this. And so, I think we just have to tell the story of what is success and how we have to go about it. You know, just a few months ago, we had a bowling task force, remember that? Can't put that work aside. Gene will remember, we were in Lawrence, listening to a group of students, lesbian, gay, transgender students talk about the pain that they felt every day. That's real. It's not real for me, because I, I, I don't, I can't associate, but it's real and we learn from that and we can be better from that. So I'm optimistic, Steve, I really am, I really am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Steve, thank you for your comment. Okay, we're going to move on to Citizens Open Forum, which we will do virtually, as we know. State Board of Education provides an opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board of Education, and written comments were able to be sent to Peggy Hill. And because of the precautions that are being taken to spread the limit of COVID-19, we're only having written comments at this particular board meeting. As of today, Peggy, just nod if I'm correct, we haven't received any written comments. I know board members, I've certainly received some via email regarding COVID-19 and the reopening of school. We will be discussing that tomorrow and I think, actually think I can probably speak for almost all of us, where we are really focused on opening school in our buildings come August, so we'll have a lot of good discussion about that tomorrow. So, thank you very much, and hopefully next month, we will be back in person and we'll be able to have Citizens Open Forum in our regular venue. At this time, I'd like to move to, as I get my iPad up, move to item number eight, which is to act on recommendations of the KISA system. And if you remember from last month, we had four districts who were brought to us for recommendation, that was a receive item, this will be an action item. The four districts are USD 259 Wichita, USD 393 Solomon, USD 491 Udora, and the state school, US, or 610 School for the Deaf. We can open for discussion on this item and possible, and certainly we'll have action taken on this item. So if you have a comment or a question, please raise your hand and then you'll be unmuted to, once I recognize you, you'll be unmuted. So, questions? And looks like Michelle and Jeanette are here. You guys have comments you'd like to share with us? Okay, Michelle, go ahead.
Madam Chair, just briefly, thank you so much, members of the board, Commissioner Watson, for this opportunity to bring you these four systems. If I could take the liberty just to review, this is the third year of opportunity for you all. It's the third year of opportunity for these four systems to have had an annual visit, to have had a chair report and to detail their own yearly summary, that is then provided to the ARC. And the ARC has had their opportunity to review, they actually have been doing that this whole school year via Zoom, via in-person earlier on. Just as a reminder that their recommendation is just that to you all, they make the recommendation and then ultimately that, that final decision-making rests with you all. Jeanette and I are sharing appropriate space here to offer our, any, any, any opportunity we can give you to answer any questions that you may have.
Michelle, for our folks that are listening, would you explain a little bit, first of all, what ARC stands for and then a little bit about that group?
Absolutely. The Accreditation Review Council is a group of field representatives from K-12, from higher ed. We have not only K-12 educators, we have K-12 human resources representation, we have a wide variety of membership on the Accreditation Review Council. Throughout the process, we've had community members, legislators join us as well. Thankfully, a couple of you have come and been privy to some of those meetings as well. So it is a large group representing a wide, wide variety of educators and non-educators.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. Okay, board members, questions, comments? I'm scanning my screen. Okay, Ann Ma.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I had a lot of questions about Wichita and School for the Deaf, but I just want to let folks know that I spent quite a bit of time talking to Jeanette and others about my concerns and I believe that both of these schools now have the process in place that will ultimately bring the outcomes that we're after, so I support the accreditation of all the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other, Michelle Dombrowski? Okay, Michelle, okay, you're good, Michelle, go ahead, please.
And yes, this is a question from Michelle Miller. Michelle, so when we go ahead and, and accredit the schools today, if we go ahead and credit the schools vote to credit those, that doesn't mean it just stops there. I mean, we're still going to get ongoing reviews, maybe monthly or year, annually, because there are things that they're working on, those schools are working on. So I just want the public to know that we're not just stopping today and saying, okay, you guys are good for five years. I mean, we're going to, the board is going to definitely be getting updates from those schools, because there are some things that they are working on right now and they're working very hard at trying to remedy those issues. So I just want the public, is, board proves everything, that it doesn't just stop today and, and now we just go on to the next school, we don't look, we're not going to ever look back at some of those things that they're working on. So is that, is that correct, Michelle?
That's correct. Accreditation should be seen as a continuous improvement model. The data is available for systems every year to look at and judge against whether their goals are increasing in the areas that they have designated as priority for their system. You all can ask to look at a system specifically at any time, that is your, that's your prerogative as a board. For example, if one of the four that you're looking at now, you would like to see data again in a year, absolutely, we'd be more than happy to bring that back to you. It hooves each of the systems to pick up the ball where they leave today and continue with that continuous improvement process. And just as you said, ma'am, not to, not to say we're good for five years, we're not coming back to it. Yearly, continuous improvement for student achievement.
Thank you, Michelle. Good question and good clarification. Dana Horst? Second, Dana, they're going to unmute, there you, there you go, Dana.
Well, my question, Michelle, is do, once they've been accredited, they kind of start all over with another accreditation segment for, over another five year, over that five years, they're working on the improvements that have been notified, they've been notified that need to be taken care of, plus others that they have identified themselves that need to be dealt with.
Thank you for the question.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. They should take this opportunity coming to you all to say, what worked really well for us? What didn't work so well? What does our data tell us we need more concentration on? What does the data tell us we have implemented and are rock stars at improving on? And just as I said, have that continue into their next cycle of improvement. It might also be an opportunity for a system to say, that chair and that team provided us super support and constructive criticism, we'd like to continue with that team, or the system can also say, we would like to readjust our team, perhaps add another member, perhaps change the chair responsibilities to have another perspective on our continued improvement cycle. So you were right, there is no, necessarily no, there is not an end, there is a continuous process of improvement for them to carry forward things that worked well, or to change areas and places where things may not have, they want to give more attention to.
Thank you, Dana, for the question. So they will, even though they've gone through accreditation this year, they go right back into it again next year with a visit again next year, isn't that correct?
Correct. That's a yearly visit. That's one of the pieces that, on my personal preference as a leader, that continued accountability from someone coming to your system, visiting you, sharing, asking the hard questions, I think is imperative for our process. Yes, they will have a visit, that's a requirement every year.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments? Ben Jones? Second. Okay, Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kind of in the same position as, as Mrs. Ma as well, I've had a lot of issue, concerns about 259. I was glad to be able to meet with, with our chair and the representative of, of that, of that area of the state, which really discussed, because I had concerns about the social emotional learning aspect of their, of the thing from last month. learning aspect of their, of the thing from last month. I hope the board members saw that it was, it was greatly updated this month, which I greatly appreciated, and all the updated information that I also received regarding that. And a conversation that I would like to have, in a bigger scope, is, it's process versus product? And when, where's that line? As a new member, still, I'm still a newbie, even though I've been on for a year and a half now, but as we get into the KISA process, you know, having that conversation of, you know, the process and the product, and how they intertwine, and where that, where that line is, and having a conversation is might probably be better, a future agenda item, but I know it's something that I, I struggled with in this last month. At this point in time, I'm ready to, to support full accreditation for five years, knowing that we have access to the information, they're constantly being reviewed, and, and looking forward to seeing what Wichita does moving forward, and all of our schools in the system, the School for the Deaf. I know we, they've struggled in the past, and because I have an intimate knowledge as a direct board, we know the direction that they're going, and we're very supportive of that. And Superintendent Barron and all the staff there are doing wonderful work, and Udora and Solomon as well, going through. So I'm looking forward to, to supporting them and their endeavors to improve education. And, and thus having conversation of process and product as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jim McNeese? There you go, you're on now, thank you, go ahead.
I'm on now. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, thank you for your comments, Ben, because it brings to mind a couple of things, having been with this process, you know, since its inception, that, you know, we are in the early stages of learning and implementing KISA. We have, what, seven? How many districts are being approved, could be approved on this one? Four?
Four. Four at this point.
How many do we have next year?
Sixty-nine, to be exact.
And the following year?
Depends on.
Yeah. Bigger. So we're in a, we're in a learning process ourselves, as was part of the design, when we allowed districts to get in early, rather than have all the districts show up in five years on the same year. And so we're learning as we go along, and I want to, to all the early schools that are in, in for accreditation, I want to thank them for their courageous step forward. It's tough to step forward when there's nobody been there before. And the system itself, I would also like to address the issue that you have Udora, and you have Wichita. Huge differences in student populations, challenges, and realities that they face on a daily basis. At the core value of it, at the core itself, they're the same, but they, and the challenges are not the same, you know, every day. So, and you have one district, one high school, probably one middle school, middle school, high school combination, and an elementary school, or a couple of elementary schools, where you've got almost 100 schools represented by USD 259. And there is a wide breadth of, of schools and where they are in the process. And probably the most important thing to me, in this process, is the leadership's commitment to the future, to what they're doing. Acknowledging their challenges, and then accepting the roles that they have to make things better for their students. So, you know, I, we have a lot of work to learn ourselves, and I want to commend, again, Michelle and, and Jeanette and the ARC for their work. They are going to be working very hard, and we need to support them, and support the school districts, especially those that are really committed to improving the opportunities and, and implementing or achieving our vision of the success of each student. So I would support the accreditation of all of these districts today as well. Thank you.
So Mr. McNeese, are you making a motion?
I would accept a motion. I had it right in front of me a moment ago, but there. It is moved that the State Board of--
Please.
I got it. It's moved that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Accreditation Review Council, and award the status of accredited to USD 259 Wichita, USD 393 Solomon, and USD 491 Udora, and to SO 610 School for the Deaf.
And we've had a motion to approve recommendation. Do we have a second? Dina Horst? Okay, further discussion? I think we've had a good discussion. Mr. Porter? Just a second. I'll get, you're unmuted, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I had the same concerns that Ann and Ben, but then noticed or found out about a rigorous strategic plan that the Wichita School District has, and it's all plans, you know, it takes the, we have relatively new leadership, it takes the first year, when you're doing something that big, it requires a, a needs assessment, and, and preparing the, the organization to move forward and then to implement the plan. Of course, this year has been so difficult to follow that. So my concerns have been alleviated, because I believe that there's a plan to address that. And I, I agree with Ben that we need to discuss the balance between process and product. I'm glad that Michelle brought up the fact that this is not just a one-shot deal, and we don't mess with it for five years. I am going to, I, I feel confident now that I can support the, the motion that has been made and seconded, because I see people taking very seriously the opportunity to, to step forward and, and understand and address where improvements need to be made, and, and implementing plans to do that. I have one other issue that's unrelated to this motion, that I just need to ask a question, when that's appropriate.
And why don't we go ahead and take the vote, and then we'll come back? Or do you want to ask it now, Mr. Porter?
It, it doesn't relate to this motion, so it'll only be a question that I don't expect an answer to at this point.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, let's go ahead and take, we have a motion and a second to approve accreditation for these four districts. So all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, nine to one, with Steve Roberts opposing. Mr. Porter?
We all got a letter from a chair of a school district that had, that was, had he been asked to leave the chair of that district, because some of the reports were not favorable, or were not approved by the leadership of that school district. And I would like to, at some point, discuss how committees are done, and whether or not, if you don't agree with something, you can just change people. I think that's important for us to know, and we're gonna learn a lot through the, through this process, and it's an ongoing process, but that's a problem that I see, that I would like for us to at least discuss it sometime.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Okay, first of all, I would like to congratulate those four school districts on achieving the status of accreditation. We all know what hard work that is. We'd like to thank the ARC. Good heavens, boy, do they have a big job. And all of their work that they're doing to bring us information from these reports. Jeanette and Michelle, we'd like to thank you. This next month, I believe we have another receive item, and how many, it's more school districts.
You have nine. You'll see seven, possibly eight more at your July meeting for review.
Okay, so the seven will be in, that'll be received, to be voted on in August, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Then there'll be another batch, I believe we were talking about, maybe November?
Right, correct.
Okay. All right, so maybe in September, October, we can have an agenda time, or we can kind of discuss some of the questions that some board members have and concerns that they have, so.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, appreciate that, the conversation, and appreciate the vote taking forward. At this time, we're gonna move to the next agenda item, which is an update. We're starting with the School for the Deaf. So an update from, and Luann is on board. So an update from Luann, and I guess maybe Lori is gonna be on helping us.
Hello to everybody. Good morning. Thank you for having me join today. It's been a little while since I've seen you. Haven't had the opportunity for you to visit campus, or for me to come to a board meeting in person, so I'm very happy to report to you today. I had decided not to use a PowerPoint today for several reasons. It's, it's a challenge for me to be able to have access to see the interpreter and share the PowerPoint on the screen at the same time, so I'll just give a, my report in ASL with the interpreter. There has been quite a bit happening at KST since the beginning of the fourth quarter, and I will do my best to summarize our efforts, and what has taken place during the time of the pandemic. You're aware that we've had the Continuous Learning Plan, that was developed by an amazing group of teachers and administrators, and we had the opportunity to look through that and then modify it, adjust it, to be able to fit our students. And we, our students were provided with multiple learning opportunities while they were at That switch from the classroom to online instruction that was digitalized was definitely a challenge, because it was completely new for us, the teachers, the students, and especially their parents. We were concerned that the students would have internet access, that the students were getting enough to eat, and we collaborated with the school districts, and we had a fantastic response in support from the school districts. When our students were at home, back in their districts at that time, the districts were able to help get them internet access and provide them with meals. So we, I appreciate that collaboration with the School for the Deaf. During that first week of the Continuous Learning Plan, I have to admit, that was very difficult for everyone. We were trying to figure out what we were going to do. Initially, we thought there would be minimized instructional time, but then we realized that we needed to make further adjustments to make sure that the students had access. You know, deaf students are using their eyes on Zoom meetings, and to be able to watch those kind of meetings all day long is exhausting on the eyes, because it requires so much focus on the screen. And most of the students had Chromebooks, which made them have a smaller screen, and it was even harder for them. And so we made multiple adjustments to our classrooms, or our class programming. So for example, having 10 people on a screen in addition to the teacher was not successful. So we split that, where we had five students on a screen for 40 minutes, and the teacher, and then the teacher, again, with five more students on the screen, and that was more successful. That way, we only had six people on instead of 11. And so that's just an example of some of the adjustments that we made. Our Student Life Department, which is our dorm, our residential program, our student advisors, counselors, related services, really did a wonderful job working with students to ensure that they maintain their IEP goals, and were able to show, show progress. It was difficult, but it seemed to be successful in the beginning. Of course, it was a challenge, and we did learn some things that we need to improve on as far as scheduling, and we were able to do that towards the end of the school year. So because of this experience that we had during the fourth quarter, which our last day of school was officially May 22nd, we had determined to send out surveys to the teachers and the parents, the Student Life Department, everybody on campus that had anything to do with this new endeavor, and get feedback from them. And so I'm just gonna give you a quick summary of what the feedback was. I know that the Department of Ed also sent out a survey to districts, and we made ours more specific to the needs of deaf and hard-of-hearing students, them being able to have that access, the visual impact on them, the Zoom fatigue from looking at the screen, and all of that kind of thing, is what we wanted to know. So we checked in with staff first, and over the last two and a half months, again, it was definitely a challenge and an experience for us. And through that reflection, with the online learning process, there were plenty of pros, but there were also some areas to work on, and to improve that online experience, to improve that online experience, if we are having to provide instruction virtually in the fall. We want to be able to prepare for that. Zoom appeared to work best in smaller groups of one to three people. It was not effective for larger classrooms. The Chromebooks were difficult to be able to use with the Zoom platform, so we're now considering providing laptops with a bigger screen. The students and the staff expressed the need to have more training for online learning, and so we need to determine what the best learning platform is, as far as that goes for the fall. It appears as though the majority of everyone liked Google Classroom, they felt like that was a better outcome with student engagement. That seemed to be a better fit. And then the areas that we need to really focus on, and try to adjust and make improvement for students and parents, there were too many classes per day. And so I'm excited to receive the new, the new information that's coming out on July 10th, version 2.0, and how that will address rate banding or content banding, and how we can apply that here. I think that's going to help a whole lot with being able to offer multiple classes per day, or seven classes per day, and, and being able to figure out how to schedule those. Another area was to streamline communication between parents, teachers, and related services, so that parents aren't receiving a huge amount of emails. Their concern was that they were getting so many emails from so many people, it was overwhelming for them. And so we're wanting to be able to streamline that. And then another area was to be able to focus on high-risk students in this environment, students that would have multiple disabilities, not deafness only, but deaf plus other disabilities. We, they were lost using the Zoom platform, because they rely on hands-on activities, and they need that tactile, that ability to have the tactile learning. And so we're preparing for that for the fall also. And so we did collect the responses from staff, and then we just did send out the survey to parents and students, asking for feedback also. And so our questions on that were, did they have internet access, and did it work well? What's the level of parent involvement you were able to provide? What worked well and what didn't work well? It was just a very simple survey, and so we're hoping to get that information all back within the next week or so. Now I'm going to talk about our return-to-school plan. I know that the Department of Education has a wonderful group of people working on the Continuous Learning Programming, version 2.0, that will come out July 10th. In light of that, we had our annual two-day retreat, and it's not actually a retreat, because it was on campus, but that's what we call it, a retreat. We did have two days that we specifically focused on what the fall would look like. We gathered, we looked at the CDC considerations for schools, we are looking forward again to what the Department of Ed will be sending out on the 10th, but our main focus was what the unique needs are of this population, of deaf and hard-of-hearing students, them being able to have access to their learning, and that access to be visual, how to reduce the eye fatigue that they experience. And so we reflected on the challenges-- And so, we reflected on the challenges and the areas that we need to work on, and then the successes also. And so, we do have a plan in place in three major areas. So, the Plan A is if we continue online instruction in the fall. Plan B is if we have students physically returning to campus, how to manage those who may feel like they're not ready to return, that they don't feel like it's safe, and parents that may be hesitant to return their students to campus. And maybe having, so our third option is maybe having some sort of a hybrid model. So, at this point, we're focusing very much on professional development for the staff to be able to access, and then training for students in this environment. And we're looking at what are the best approaches to online instruction and the platforms to use and training in those areas. And so, we're starting to develop professional development for those. And we're also looking at mental health, social and emotional wellbeing for our students. This was very difficult for our students who didn't have those socialization opportunities with peers using the same language. And so, we want to be able to determine how we can continue to support that virtually, even though they do see a counselor maybe on a regular basis from the School for the Deaf, but that's not the same as that in-person socialization. And then, what, and then looking at what the first week of school will look like when people return. It'll likely be a recap of where we left off at the end of the fourth quarter. You know, at the beginning of the year, you do all the fun, or at the end of the year, you do all the fun celebrations and everything. We'll probably do that the first week of school, and we're still discussing that. We definitely will need to build in professional development for staff and students. Classroom-led support, scheduling, and then transportation are other areas that we're considering. We have developed plans for those areas that are unique to us. And once we receive the Department of Education guidelines, we'll be able to align that with what we have in place and to help us ensure that we're not missing anything that's critical. And we do appreciate the staff and administrators throughout the state that are working on developing that new plan. And so, all of that to say, that's a work in progress. And now, I'm going to move on to my next topic, which is ESY, or Extended School Year for this year. This year, we did decide, instead of having in-person ESY, even with the phases that we're in now and the number of students in the classroom, that was permissible. We felt like it was too early to do that, and so, we decided on virtual ESY. We have 60 students that are enrolled at this point, and they started their first day yesterday. And ESY will last for three weeks. Last year, we had about 94 students that were enrolled. And so, it is a lower number this year, and I think that's to be expected given the circumstances that we're in. We have 60 students enrolled. Next, I'm going to talk about communication. People in the deaf community as well as the School for the Deaf's staff internally, of course, view of communication as a very critical thing, and I want to be sure and be informative to them and let them know what's happening. And so, we have established all staff Zoom meetings that we're, that I'm providing. And so, my third one will actually be next week. And so, we've done that one afternoon about once a month with updates throughout the pandemic and this, and the staff, and everybody wants that to continue. And we've had full attendance to those with all of the staff with their questions, you know, through the chat box and everything, so we'll be continuing that. As far as the deaf community, I have been posting updates through the Kansas Association of the Deaf newsletter that goes out every month. And, you know, right now with this time of so much misinformation or so much, so much of an aspect of not knowing what's happening, that's been very helpful to the deaf community. And so, the big question is, are we reopening in the fall? And the response is, we don't have the answer to that right now, and we'll wait until it gets closer to make that decision, and then we'll be able to give you that answer. Next, I wanted to talk about graduation. We had two meetings with our Class of 2020 here at the School for the Deaf, and their very specific request was that they have an in-person graduation. And we said that we would consider that as more time went by, and the date they were asking for was June 22nd, and that would create a large number of people in one room. And so, I did talk with Commissioner Watson and Mrs. Dombrowski and have that conversation about that. And also consulted with the Johnson County Department of Health. And they did indeed confirm that we can proceed with a live in-person graduation on June 22nd. And that will be at 10:00 AM. We will comply with the recommendations from the CDC for the safety of our seniors and their families. We are limiting the number of attendance to 90 people in the gym. The gym can actually hold 300 to 350 people. And so, every year, we do reach that limit. And for this year, again, we're limiting the number to 90. So, it'll be the seniors only and their families. And there wouldn't be any extraneous staff attending or any other students. We want the seniors to be able to have that experience where they can bring as many family members as they want to. We met with the seniors and let them know that it would be approved, and they were very excited about that, that they would get to have a traditional in-person graduation. They wanted to be able to enjoy this once-in-a-lifetime milestone, and we want the same for them. The Johnson County Department of Health recommends having the families be seated together in a group and then have six foot of distance, six feet of distance between each family group. And, and we will also be providing masks at that time if they feel like they want to wear them. Sorenson Video Relay Company did provide us with some money to be able to provide the parents with lunch. And it'll be a to-go lunch that they can just pick up and take with them when the graduation is over. And so, plans are set now for graduation to be June 22nd. My next item is the Seal of Biloteracy. We have never recommended a student for that in the past. And so, this year, we had our very first student receive the Gold Level of the Seal of Biloteracy, meaning that they are considered highly skilled in two languages. And the student's name is Taylor Wise. She's from Wichita. And so, she was recognized for her proficiency both in English and ASL. And that, I'm hoping that that will start a trend here, and that will encourage students to be proficient in both languages. We're very excited about that. That's a really huge recognition for her. My last two items are to let you know what we've been working on. That was part of our CSD recommendations, our accreditation, and then the KISA recommendations as well combined. We have been developing a strategic plan, and we have four target areas within that plan. I did see the discussion earlier about needing to focus on the areas of improvement with instruction and data, and we do recognize that that's an area that we need to focus on and so that we can ensure that learning is happening. So, the first area is to create a dynamic, dynamic learning environment that maximizes students' success and personal, academic and personal success. The next is to be able to be creative in how we serve students on and off campus. The third is to enhance community engagement and collaboration through marketing and communication avenues that are available to us. And then, the fourth would be to provide a high-quality statewide services and resources, support for education programs, professionals, families, with the result being tied to student achievement. And there is more information on each of those areas, and I'll be sharing that with our local board members, Michelle Dombrowski, when we're finished with that, and ask her to take a look at that and give us feedback, and then get that to you as a group for review. The next item is our District Policies and Handbook. A little bit of background for you. All school districts, of course, have a district policy that they work from, and they work with CASB, the Kansas Association of School Boards, to develop that. We had started out to work with CASB, and we did learn that because our board is the State Board of Education, that there are a lot of general standard policies that apply to districts that are much more focused to their local Board of Education. And because ours is the State Board of Education, we had a conversation with Randy, or Commissioner Watson, and he recommended looking at both the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind Handbooks, combining those to include the statutes that apply to the schools in the handbook. The work will be completed very soon, and what's left to do now is to review with, with Therese, our HR Director, and then John Harding, the Superintendent of the School for the Blind, and myself to review that. And then, once we approve, then we would submit it to Michelle Dombrowski. And I believe John Harding will submit it to Janet Wall for a final review. And we're hoping to have that ready to go by Friday, June 12th. We really have wanted to work on that for a very long time, and Dr. Watson really wanted to see us have one combined handbook for both schools. And so, we've been working towards that, but we are almost done. And that has been a longtime desire for me to be able to finish that policy handbook, and it has been a very big task, but we'll be very relieved when it's done. I believe that that completes my report at that point, and I can stand for questions that you have. I saw some messages coming up in the chat box. Let me see what those said.
Thank you, Luann, and thank you, Lori. I know we always so enjoy coming to the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind in April, and we had to miss that this year. So, we really did miss our opportunity to come over and see the schools and the students and the staff. So, that's, that's always a great opportunity. So, we're, we're sorry to have to miss that. Michelle, is there anything you'd like to share as far as your, from the School for the Deaf?
Am I unmuted? Yes, and we're, and we're doing our ongoing with Mark Ferguson and with Luann and with, and with HR. We're going through our negotiations right now as far as like the committee we're meeting. I believe we have our next meeting on June, I believe it's June 30th, is it, Mark?
Nine.
Yes, and I want to congratulate, I want to congratulate you guys on your accreditation today. So, now you have dual accreditation in the same, in the same year, so congratulations on that. And yes, we'll be in touch soon. I'm looking forward to all the, the updates coming up in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you.
Okay, questions for Luann? Anybody? Well, Luann, we really appreciate your thorough update. It's helpful for us to hear from both you and John on these periodic bases. And like I say, we, we regret having missed the April meeting because that's always a great opportunity, but we all know why that didn't happen this year. So, thank you very much for joining us today, you and Lori, and I appreciate the ongoing work at the School for the Deaf and even as we go through this unusually extended school year, which you guys have been dealing with also. So, thank you. Okay, so appreciate the update. Board, we're going to take about a brief 10-minute break. I actually show it right at 11:25. So, we'll come back at 11:35, and if you would just, in this intervening time, just to kind of mute your, well, you're probably already muted, but go ahead and put your screen on dark and then open it back up when you're ready. Okay, board members, I think we'll all come back to our meeting. Thank you for, again, to the School for the Deaf for their update. And we'll move to the next board agenda item was the, which is the update from the Kansas School for the Blind. So, John Harding is here, and he will present our information. I believe, John, you have a PowerPoint, if I'm not correct.
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board, for the opportunity to present. I'll try to be brief. It's good to see everybody again. We did miss you here on campus. I was looking forward to that, and we'll just look forward to the next time. I'll share my PowerPoint. You can let me know maybe with a thumbs up that you are able to see it. Okay, so I want to just jump in and address really three different areas. One, one is our Continuous Learning Plan, which you have received and approved, of course, and then our Extended School Year Program. And finally, just our preparations for returning in, in the fall. Certainly encourage you to jump in with questions, or you can wait until the end, whatever suits your, your need. I do want to note that Peggy, I think, has shared with you a couple of other documents that I want to encourage you to at least look at. One is our Annual Report for 2019-2020, and it's really our effort to get serious about data and present that in a way that makes sense to people on the outside and certainly to, to our, our board members. And we'll do this really every year, looking at our data as an agency, not just here on campus, but our field services, which is a huge component of the work that we do. You also have a color handout dated May 4th, which is on my screen now. So, if you want to reference that as I talk, you certainly can do it. It gives you more information probably than I'll be able to give you here orally. But our Continuous Learning Plan, going back to that, like everybody, a shock to the system, I suppose you would say. We had spring break and then one extra week to, to prepare for instruction remotely. And I think the big, the biggest takeaway for, for us was the increased parent engagement. One of the biggest challenges of running a residential school is connecting with parents in meaningful ways and sharing what you're doing, what the students are doing, and having consistent engagement, not just reporting. Certainly, we do quarterly reports. We do IEP meetings. We do grades, but really dialogue with the parents and ask them what they need, what their struggles are. This was our opportunity to do that, and I think it was the best part of our Continuous Learning Plan. Teachers reported that parents learned students had skills they never realized. We were able to use routines in the home to teach new skills or reinforce learned skills, things like cooking, cleaning, chores, basic things like that. And then, we also use this time to set up meetings with parents specifically. So, for those students who were not able to log on to Zoom, not all of them could, we set up some time to meet with parents and ask them, how can we best help you during this time? So, we, I think that was certainly a positive, an unexpected positive for our Continuous Learning Plan. As, as Randy and others call it, the pivots, we had to make some changes like everybody else. We expanded classes. Once we got our feet on the ground and, and believed we were offering, you know, quality instruction to our own students, we expanded that to students who were blind, visually impaired across the state, who wanted to participate in the things that we were. who wanted to participate in the things that we were offering. So we offered a tech class, we offered podcasting, a fitness class, and we expanded that to kids across the state. We also increased the time that our social workers were active and involved. Each family got a call. We're fortunate here to have actually two social workers, one who runs our transition program, another one's a contract worker who's been with us for years. So they doubled down and reached out to parents during this time and said, you know, how are you doing? Not just about academics, certainly asking, do you have food? Are you concerned about your child's, you know, anxieties? What, in what ways can we help? So we're pretty proud of the work that we did, some problem solving, and then connecting them with resources in their home district. Our engagement really was 100%. That sounds odd to say. Of course, I just said that some kids weren't able to log on to Zoom, but in cases where they couldn't, we worked through and with the parents, so we, you know, believed that all of our students were engaged really at 100%. We reflected on that and said, you know, what's this going to look like in the fall? I'll address that in future slides, but there's certainly some lessons there as we move forward. Some of the big accomplishments, again, I mentioned parent engagement, but these were unexpected wins, too. Our podcasting has just been phenomenal. We're having such a good time with that. The kids are learning so many skills that we didn't anticipate, so they are learning interview skills, production, audio editing, research, and they have their podcasts on iTunes and iHeartRadio. They've interviewed eight different adults, four of whom have were blind or visually impaired themselves and successful. It's been a great experience. We're looking to expand that. Our students were also published in Education Week, so an author named Larry Ferlazzo wanted feedback from students on continuous learning and remote learning. Our students, five of them, sent either written reflections on that, or and they sent a podcast as well, which he published in Education Week, so we were proud of our students for doing that. And lastly, Kevin Wang, who started a program called Microsoft Teals. It's a program designed to help school districts build their own capacity in computer science across the country. He highlighted KSSB for doing that work with students who are blind, visually impaired. It's a very small program, but we've kept it alive, and I think it's incredibly important simply because most students with disabilities, including those who are blind, do not have access to higher mathematics and science courses, and certainly not computer science. So this is a way to make it accessible, and it uses industry-recognized language like Java, which is a big deal for for students who want to sell their skills to employers. Again, some of the lessons that we learned through this process, we recognized we needed, you know, learning management systems, much like colleges or high schools, but for our kids, it needs to be accessible. Not all learning management systems are, so Canvas, sometimes Blackboard, you've all probably used these. They're not so good when you require a device to read the text, or if you're a Braille user. So we've done some research on this, worked with our teachers, and then begun training our staff and our students on how to use this. This is particularly important for elementary, middle school, high school students who will use this in their public schools, and they will use it once they leave high school. And we needed something that was accessible, so we've settled on something called Blackboard Course Sites with Ally, and we're using our own staff, we're visually impaired, to test that. We're using it during summer school, and we will certainly use this in the fall when we return, so that students have access to content and engagement if they need to go home in the fall. So we had tremendous growth in technology with our own staff. We continue to improve on that. This morning, of course, Blackboard Course Sites went down, as it often does, so we have to teach students and teachers how to adjust and have patience with that, but the other thing we did really well was record all our minutes very meticulously, so we took attendance, of course, and we recorded the number of minutes of service that each student received during the continuous learning plan, which I think will be important. Our plan is, when we come back in the fall, to regather IEP teams and say, what are your concerns, and how do we move forward to ensure that learning continues in the fall? So we were proud of that, and and lastly, our survey response, what I call our survey response loop. A lot of times, school districts do surveys, but the parents don't know what that means for them. They're just asked to give feedback. What we want to do is to ask them a question and then respond to that. So our first attempt at that was Saturday, the 30th of May, where we asked parents, what did they need to know about technology in a remote environment so that their students could access education? What did the parents need to know? What did the students need to know? And then we did a webinar to respond to that and answer questions. It happened to be on screen readers, which for our students is a pretty a pretty common way to access content. So two of our staff on a Saturday morning spent time with parents answering their questions. We recorded that and published that, and we'll continue to do these surveys and response feedbacks to tighten up our response to parent needs and interest. The next item I wanted to talk about was the extended school year, so you just see the numbers in front of you. Three weeks, started yesterday, 52 students. I think we initially had 73, 74 students who registered, so down a little bit, and then 20 instructors, which for us is actually low, but still a nice complement of classes, including Braille, literacy, career, daily living skills, technology, orientation, mobility. And today, on every Tuesday, we gather the staff and say, what's working, what's not working? Essentially, we go Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 11:45 with core content, and then on Fridays, we do some extras, music, basic Spanish, public speaking, things like that, that kids really want to know about and have fun with podcasting, too. Our reopening plan for the fall is is just in the planning stages, like everybody else's. We're meeting as an administrative team, and I will say that, of course, we're waiting for the guidance from KSTE, and we'll not really publish anything until we get that, to make sure our plan is aligned with that, but I must say, the Wyandotte County Unified Government Health Department has been fantastic. Matt May has been our contact over there. They've offered us PPE supplies, and they have an education subcommittee. Dr. Corovo has put us in touch with that group, so we're listening to what other schools, larger schools, are doing. We're also following some input from the Council of Schools for the Blind. Other schools for the blind across the country are thinking critically about, what does this look like if we have students who stay in a dorm and come from across the state and are often engaged in the community on a daily basis? What does that mean for us? So they're giving us some good feedback, and of course, we're monitoring the CDC and other guidance, too, but some of the things that we're looking at is increasing our screenings, hiring certified nursing assistants to help with that, updating our sick policy, you know, spacing, going to block scheduling, more cleaning, more online courses, and just ready to switch to an online learning environment if we need to. We know we can do it. We've done it in the spring. The only question really is for those students who are more complex, or a few of our transition students who are working on career exploration, independent living skills, those are hard to emulate in a remote environment, so those are the ones that give you the most pause in thinking about how we'll meet their needs. If you would come up this spring, you would have seen our playground that's going up. It'll open up August 17. This was, again, a public-private partnership with some of our community sponsors, so we're grateful for that. We're excited. Now we just have to figure out how to clean it every time we use it, but it's a great addition to our campus and will, I think, attract some parents who might be interested in what we offer. Going back, it sits next to, actually, a preschool enrichment program we're starting in Irwin Building, so it's a nice one-two combination. Some other renovations, you might have seen, our pool was down really since December. Now that you can see it's back up and ready for opening. Once we have an inspection, our preschool enrichment program, our room was renovated, just fresh paint, some new flooring. We are continuing to focus on STEM and making that accessible for students who are blind, visually impaired. Our Brighton Rec Center will be remodeled to house a learning space and a maker space, high-technology equipment, so students get the feel of designing, creating, building, and empowerment that comes with that. We'll have a mobile STEM unit that goes across the state, so we'll put a lot of equipment in a van, take it across the state in the fall of 2020. That's still our intention to do that. A couple of those things, as I wrap up, please, if you have just a moment to page through the annual report, even if you don't read it, it's really designed to look through and see some pretty striking visuals and graphics that talk about data. We're intent on using data in a more in a way that really helps us reflect and improve, and I think this report will show that. We do have seven new staff members who are joining us. Some of these are replacements, but we'll have people now in Wichita again, Wimigo, Concordia. We have a staff who's moving to Hays, Kansas, which will help us with our outreach. That part of our program continues to grow, and it's amazing, some of the work that we're doing in conjunction with local school districts. And then our KISA visit, there's been a lot of discussion this morning about KISA. Our third-year visit will be July 1st. We'll conduct it with our team via Zoom. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Watson for the superintendent calls. Those have been tremendously helpful as I listen to those and hear some of the questions that other superintendents have. It helps me understand what's going on and plan for the future, so I'll stop here and answer any questions if the board has any.
Well, thank you, John. We appreciate your report. And board members, the annual report that John referred to is in that file of electronic information that Peggy sent us all yesterday. So if you're wanting to look at that, take a look at that email from Peggy yesterday. So questions, let's see. Janet or Ben, if you want to start, if you have any questions or comments as far as the School for the Blind is concerned, either one of you? Janet? Janet Wall, let's see, we'll get you unmuted. Okay, you're good now.
How's that?
Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just am amazed by what's happening with both of these schools, and they they're doing a wonderful job with such challenges, so I'd just like to personally thank John and Luanne for all that they've done during these challenging times. It appears to me you guys are doing a wonderful job and taking care of these kids, and as you well know, they're extremely important, not only to me, but I think every one of these board members, so I'd just like to thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ben Jones, if we can get Ben unmuted, second Ben?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to echo Janet's comments, and I've got to, I've enjoyed seeing the Facebook and the social media posts from the School for the Blind, in case you guys haven't been seeing. I've shared some of them on my own Facebook page, and proud of the work that the staff is doing, and some of them are close around me, and I was looking at the annual report last night, and every one of my districts in my home county utilize services from the School for the Blind. There's four located in my home county. I represent three of the four. And I was kind of shocked to know that, in a county of less than 10,000 people, that that, you know, we've got our four small districts utilizing their services. So it's exciting to see that expansion in this area and the services and schools providing, and I've enjoyed the creative learning that has been taking place, because they face different challenges than typically the kids that we visit about in these meetings, because they have to be very hands-on. Just knowing the Operation Mobility, O&amp;M piece, and trying to deliver that online has been a challenge, but I've enjoyed seeing the pictures that they post on social media and all the work the staff is doing, and I missed our board visit as well, and I missed graduation that part of the season as well. But again, thank you to the staff of KSSB and all the work they do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You bet. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for John? Okay, seeing none. John, thank you very much, and again, extend to your staff the fact that we're sorry we missed them this spring, but we will be we'll be back and see them again soon. And thanks to you and Luanne both for all your work that you're doing with with our students and the continued outreach that you're doing throughout the state. Ben gave a great example of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda, Ivan, this morning, is to act on appointment of Special Education Advisory Council, and Bert is here and is going to go over. He's already loaded up a PowerPoint for us and is going to give us some conversation. So Bert, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and State Board. We'll go over our recommendations for who we would like appointed to the Special Ed Advisory Council. The CAC members are representing positions that are identified in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and Kansas Law. The membership must be a majority requirement, and that means that they either have to be an individual with a disability or be a parent of a child with a disability age birth to age 26. Their option is to serve a three-year term and may continue for a second term. And we represent areas of the state wherever possible. When we take the nominations, we try to ensure that we can get those across the state and to serve each state board region. So the panel of CAC leadership consists of the current chair, the past chair, and the chair-elect, and KSTE sets leadership. We work in an advisory capacity to that group to provide them with the information on the nominations. So nominations were received from April 21 through May 22. Nominations were reviewed based on this criteria. Had to be an open position currently, be a parent or a person with a disability so we could fulfill the majority requirement, and then look at regions of the state that were represented. We did not receive any nominations from Region 2 or from the position of representative from the State Adult Corrections Agency. Next slide. So members to be approved for a second term, we are recommending that Dr. Shelley Kemper, who represents Administrator Program for Exceptional Children. She fulfills a majority requirement. Region 5, we recommend her to be renewed for a second term, as well as Laura Thompson, who's a representative of other state agencies involved in the financing or delivery-related services to exceptional children. She fulfills a majority requirement. She's Region 7. Now we'll look at our new members to be approved for a first term. They include Jennifer Kuzinski. She represents another state agency involved in the financing or delivery-related services to exceptional children. She does fulfill the majority requirement. She would represent Region 3. Tricia Backman, representative from the State Juvenile Corrections Agency. That's juvenile corrections, not adult, does not fulfill the majority requirement. She'd represent Region 4. Amy Zimmerman is a parent of a gifted child. She fulfills a majority requirement, and she would represent Region 5. And then Marvin Miller is a teacher, special education. He fulfills a majority requirement for Region 10. Jennifer Kirth would represent Institution of Higher Education that prepares special education-related service personnel. She does not fulfill the majority requirement. She represents Region 4. So would there be any questions that board members have for the CAC?
I would guess there probably is. If you could close your share screen, that way I can see the rest of the folks. Okay, there's everybody. Question, Anne Ma. Anne, you are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Bert, just had a question. I know there was a discussion about how many teachers there were in this group. Will we just now have one teacher?
I believe that we have two. We have a general education teacher currently represented by Tina Gibson, and then we have the special education teacher that we're recommending in Marvin Miller. So we have the two positions, and that meets the IDEA requirement as well as Kansas Law.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, board members? Janet Wall? Not yet, Janet. Go ahead. Let's see. There you go. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, Bert, I just have a question. You said you were not able to find anyone in the adult corrections area?
Was it adult?
Okay. You said adult, correct?
That's correct. We have two positions that we, after we finish these nominations, and if the board approves them, that we will publicize for State Board and through our listservs for the position of adult correction facility as well as a state education official. And the way we've defined state education official would be someone that works for the state. And we really would like to seek some applications from K-BOR, the Board of Regents, so that we get representation through that Board of Regents if we can. But again, we'll open it up. As a state education official, we will take the applicants. We will then have them of CAC have a discussion, and then they would move forward in recommending persons to fill those two slots, and we do that at a future board meeting.
Okay. Well, I would be willing to contact somebody, someone in the justice system to try to get a recommendation.
Please have them, when we do the posting, have them send their information to us, or you could nominate them, and then we'll consider.
When do you think that will be posted?
As soon as this board meeting is over and you approve or do not approve this candidate pool, then we will get it posted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dana Horst? Second, not unmuted yet. There you go, Dana. Go ahead.
I was wondering, with the person that is from a corrections institution, what kind of qualifications are you looking for?
It would be
that person?
Yeah, they work within the Adult Correction Agency. So as long as they have a position within an adult correction facility, then they would fulfill the requirement to be representing that group. Because the thing that the board needs to understand is that each of these representatives is representing a specific group of individuals. Pardon me while I get my light back on. And those individuals then would be accountable and responsible for sharing information with the larger group of the field. So within our special ed design, then if you represent, for example, a special education teacher, then you could share information with special education teachers. So in this case, it's adult correction, and that person would then be available to share information with adult correction agencies.
Okay, so there's not a specific position that would be held at the corrections institution?
Exactly.
That they'd need to, so they could be a guard, they could be someone who works with counseling or whatever.
Yeah, we would consider. You're welcome.
Jim McNeese, second Jim. Wait a minute, Jim. Okay, oh, Jim.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the nominations as presented for the CAC Board of Directors.
Okay, so I'll read it. Jim is moving that the Kansas State Board of Education act to reappoint Dr. Shelley Kemper and Laura Thompson to a second term and to appoint Jennifer Kuzinski, Tricia Backman, Amy Zimmerman, Marvin Miller, and Jennifer Kirth to the Special Education Advisory Council with their terms effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2023. Is that what you recommended, Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Exactly.
Do we have a sec? Mr. Porter, seconds? Okay, anybody question? Jim? Jim has a question? Jim Porter? Okay, Jim, go ahead.
This is a question to Bert. When you talked about representative from a educational institution, you mentioned K-BOR. Would, does that include both members of K-BOR and employees of K-BOR, or just the employees?
We would consider either.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, if not, we've, oh, Ben Jones.
There we are. Thank you, Madam Chair. Two quickies. One of them is, is there still representation from one of our, our schools, one of the state schools, School for the Blind and/or the School for the Deaf? Because I was looking through the list and I couldn't find anybody, but I could be just missing it. And the second question is, this is more of an observation, that there are six representatives from the Topeka area, and everybody else kind of has two or one, like the Kansas City Wyandotte, or Wyandotte-Johnson County, there's only two representatives from that whole area. So I mean, it's just kind of a dispersment, but I know we have to also watch qualifications as well. So that was just a concern that I have, and you could probably answer the first one. And the second one might, might lead me to a, just, I don't know. Anyway, if you could address those, thank you.
We have had representation from the School for the Deaf. We had a person that just left. I'm looking at my membership list to see if we have that as a specific position. I believe it was representative of a state agency. So there is the possibility that we could look at that individual under the state education official. So that's something that we could consider, because they would be working for the state, and we could consider a nominee from either School for the Deaf or School for the Blind. So that's an excellent question, Ben, and thank you for bringing that up, because I needed to clarify that. As far as representation from across the state, I think it's the leadership team and what they look for in the qualifications. And the other consideration that sometimes gets us sidetracked for the candidate pool is that majority requirement. So right now, out of the 20 members, we have 11 that meet the majority requirement, and the IDEA says that we have to have a majority. So as we look at these two candidates we'll be adding, we'll have to consider that at least one meets that majority requirement. So in one case, we did have a consideration to where we had to select someone who met the majority in order to meet the majority requirement. And we had excellent candidates, so I don't want anybody to think that the, I mean, they were all reviewed, and they were all highly recommended. So it's not a consideration that I think that the leadership team was trying to leave anybody out. It truly was looking at representation within those different council memberships to try and select the best candidate that they thought could bring to the table information to support the movement within the goals of CAC. So I know it looks like it's a little top-heavy. I believe we have, if you look at the membership list, it's on the back page. I think it's showing that we have six members from Region 4. We have two from pretty much every other region, except for Region 1 and 3, we have one. And then we have none from 2. So I agree with you, and that was a consideration in our discussion.
Yeah, and I appreciate you looking at the two schools, because we do have somebody from KU on the board, if we approve this slate. So we do have somebody from a K-BOR institution kind of serving in that capacity, which I don't know if that kind of helps with that. But that was kind of one of my concerns. It was that position. I'm not questioning the qualifications of the individual, but whether if we would ever consider somebody from private school to fulfill that, or whether it has been filled by somebody from the privates as well and providing their input. So that was, that was just one of my concerns. I appreciate it.
We do have a representative of private schools, and that's Amy Wagner.
Well, that's the private K-12, but I'm talking for that college position.
Gotcha. Thank you. Good point.
Anyway, thank you, Ms. Moore. Dr. Moore, thank you.
Okay, Michelle Dombrowski?
Unless there are two Jennifer Kuzinskis, I believe she is with, she's with the School for the Deaf. Unless, well, two, because I know that there's a Jennifer Kuzinski, and she's in Olathe, and she, she works with the School for the Deaf.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, because I was like, oh, I know her, and I'm like, unless there's two. And this person's totally different, but when I was doing research on this, I looked her up, and she's the School for the Deaf. So Ben, that should give us, and she lives in Olathe.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Good care. Okay, if there's not any further questions, I take a motion. Janet Wall? Just second, Janet. Get you unmuted.
Don't you have a motion on the table?
You already had one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Janet, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. I, it's, I just received a text that someone had been nominated from District 2. I wondered if they just didn't fulfill the majority? Or what was the reason? Or did you get it?
We don't have anyone on our list, I'm looking at it right now, Janet, that shows a Region 2 representation. So if you want
That's what I was told.
If you want to send me a private email, I would be glad to investigate that. But at this point in time, maybe they're listed on my list for a different region, but we don't have Region 2. We did have an individual that left it blank for the board region that we, it could be that individual.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table for the CAC nomination, so we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, so it is a 9-0-1 with Steve Roberts abstaining. Okay, board members, we are going to take a recess for lunch. So go around, go outside and play out in the heat and humidity for a little while. No, just kidding. We will reconvene at 1:05 with the recognition of our National Teacher of the Year, Tabitha Rossboy. So if you'd go ahead and stop your video, and we'll see you back in just about an hour. Thank you very much. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I think we'll bring the meeting back to order for this afternoon. All board members, I believe Jim McNeese was going to be a little bit late joining us. He had something he had to attend to. Well, I tell you what, this, this first agenda item on the afternoon is to quote Dale Dennis, it just doesn't get any better than this. So we are just thrilled to have Tabitha here, and I believe Dale is going to lead this. Trying to see if there he is, there he is. Okay, Dale, Dale, yes.
I'm truly excited about this. Now, board members, I want you to think about this. You are the first elected State Board of Education that has ever had a National Teacher of the Year appear before you in Kansas. Think about that. We had one in 1962, but since the elected board has been chosen in 1969, we got the cream of the crop, the one and only Tabitha Rossboy. But Tabitha, we're so honored and thrilled. And you tell us a little bit, you kind of go full-time with him July 1st?
Yeah, that's correct. I'm sort of wrapping up some loose ends, you know, as loose as they, tightly as they can be for the next school year for my district. And then, yeah, I go full-time July 1st.
We'd like, we'll turn it, the mic over to you, and you can tell us a little bit about, share about it, and what you've learned so far and the experience you've had so far, and where you think you're headed this year. I'd be excited to hear about that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. First of all, thank you guys so much for having me here today. I do wish we could be together in person, but I appreciate that you're keeping, you know, safety at the forefront of your planning, and so I am glad to be here, even virtually. I am very, very excited, because, you know, in the last 68 years of the National Teacher of the Year program, there's never before been a preschool teacher named National Teacher of the Year. So this is a huge step forward for early childhood education, and I'm excited to elevate the work of early childhood educators, not only in Kansas, but across our country. You know, I signed in my classroom reads, "From tiny seeds grow mighty trees." And I think about that a lot. I've thought about it a lot over the last decade, and now when I advocate for our youngest learners. From when a child is born to the age of five are the most critical years of brain development. And research shows us that if we provide quality early childhood experiences, that they will be successful in many different ways later in life. I, you know, I really want to work with our country to positively affect outcomes for all students and let people know that preschool is deliberate teaching. It is a time of learning through play, of creative discovery, and building the foundation that's critical for long-term success in life, because preschool is school. And so, you know, from when I spoke to you in January, that I really hope that I can really reframe when I hear people say K through 12. I hope to hear them say pre-K through 12 as we continue to talk about education. So in addition to advocating for early childhood at the national level, I also really believe that every child deserves and needs a quality social-emotional education every single day, no matter what age level they are. So what this looks like is, you know, teaching kids to regulate their emotions, to interact positively with peers and adults, and to teach problem-solving skills that turn into critical thinking skills, which all of us know are super-important from when we're a child into adulthood. So the ability to self-regulate and show empathy and exercise compassion, I really believe have to be taught just as intentionally as academic content. When I first began teaching, I didn't really understand that my students needed that social and emotional support just as much as they needed to learn how to read and write. But in their typical form, my students have taught me what I didn't know. Their needs are glaring, especially now in the face of a global crisis, and those needs are demanding to be met both at home and at school. So over the last several decades, you know, I've sort of felt our, our purpose quietly shift. But now, in the face of COVID-19 and everything that we're going through, their needs are too loud to ignore any longer. So we're being called on to guide our students through the ups and downs of human emotion and to help them navigate these unprecedented times with empathy and with strength. And so I look forward to furthering both of those messages in my year as National Teacher of the Year. Now, this does mean that I won't be in my classroom, which will be really hard for me to be apart from my students, but I do know that the impact that I can make in this position will just be helping my students in a different way than I was when I was in the classroom every day. The Kansas Department of Education has graciously provided the funding that we're going to need to cover my substitute teacher. That will take the helm for me as I travel the country advocating for teachers and students. I just can't say enough about what a wonderful partner KSSTE has been through every step. Dr. Watson, Brad, Denise, Sherry, many more have actively made sure that my new adventures will be safe and that I'll be taken care of. I said to some of my friends at CCSSO that I feel like I came to the table with my family. And that's sort of just what you get when you're from Kansas, like making sure the hotels I'm going to stay in are safe and that somebody's going to know where I'm at all the time. You know, I never have for a second felt like that my needs were not going to be taken care of while I'm doing this, this important, exciting work. In the last couple of months, CCSSO has had me working with their media teams and their consultants, and I was really excited to say things like, oh, I learned that in Kansas. I learned that. Because our Kansas Teacher of the Year program is really premier, and a lot of people speak highly of it across the nation. And so I want to thank you guys in the Department of Education for really elevating teacher voice and making it, you know, sort of like our Continuous Learning Plan, a program that other people look to. It really is kind of a shining star. And I get to say all the time, yeah, I'm from Kansas where that, you know, gold standard is. And now that work's going to be known all around the country. So some of my upcoming kind of exciting opportunities include things like a feature on the Kelly Clarkson Show. I'm going to be a guest on several podcasts, and I have speaking opportunities that are coming in, you know, rapidly. I meet about those every week. They said I was not taking over until July 1st, but it's been pretty steady the past two months, meeting with CCSSO every single day. I've got two things coming up in Arkansas, one in Idaho, one at Fort Hayes, which is really exciting in January. Lots of opening convocations. I have a keynote with the National Education Association for the first week in July. And a lot of these things are going to be virtual, which does create some new and interesting challenges. But I'm happy knowing that by doing that, we're keeping other people safe. It's estimated I'll have around 150 speaking It's estimated I'll have around 150 speaking engagements this year, possibly more. So spreading the news about education and what's wonderful is still happening, even in the face of COVID-19. So when I was thinking about talking to you guys today, I just keep thinking like, I'm just a preschool teacher from Kansas, you know, and now I have this new mission in front of me. Some days I wake up and I still wonder how I got here. I never in a million years dreamed I would be National Teacher of the Year or Kansas Teacher of the Year. And when I was named, I worried that I wouldn't make the impact that I had hoped. But I soon realized that our nation needs the voice of educators now more than they ever have before. Our schools are so much to so many. You know, they're a safe place, and they're where many of our students are fed and welcomed and supported and encouraged and loved. And they're the saving grace for families who work outside of the home, and they're just this beautiful social partnership between family and community. And in the face of a global pandemic, these things are all at stake. And in my experience being from Kansas, where educator voice is elevated and valued, will guide me as I speak for education. I do think that my voice is meant for this moment. Our redesign experience is going to be a beacon of light for schools across the United States as we figure out how to meet our student needs during these times. You know, I was born in South Carolina, and I always say there is no doubt that I'm Kansas grown. So I just, I want to thank all of you for all that you do to support education in our state and for everything that you've poured into me. I'm proud to say that I'm the 2020 National Teacher of the Year and that I am from the great state of Kansas.
Thank you, Tabitha. Madam Chairman, I think we got about ten minutes for a few questions.
I have no doubt the Board's going to have some questions. And Tabitha, since we can't see you in person, I'm going to add one more speaking engagement. I'd like for you to come back to a Board meeting sometime when we're in person. So, you know, we can only give you a virtual hug right now, but I think we'd all love to give you a hug and have a picture taken and all that, because, you know, it's just so exciting. It's, first of all, it's so exciting. We just know what the Kansas Teacher of the Year program, now to have a National Teacher of the Year program, 1962. That was when Kennedy was president. For those of us who lived through that time, that wouldn't be you, Tabitha. We, many of us do remember that, so we are just thrilled that you've become online. But yeah, please come back and see us sometime when we have an in-person meeting and we can, we can, we can hear a little bit about your travels and some of that. So I know, Board members, there's going to be some questions, so if you just kind of raise your hand if you have questions, and I will acknowledge you. Okay, Ben Jones? Just a second. Okay, Ben, not quite yet. There you go. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just extend my congratulations. And while I was out getting some lunch at one of my local restaurants, I encountered another nominated teacher for this upcoming year from a district. And he was talking about, and he was talking about the process he just went through, and I didn't even know he was nominated by his school for this, for this next crop coming up through the state. And so I was, I was glad to hear that from him. And so can you speak a little bit, I mean, we know the state process, but talk about, a little bit about the national process, all the things that you had to go through, traveling and the interview process, and everything you had to do to prepare to be a National Teacher of the Year.
Sure. So really, the application is really similar, and I think that's why Kansas is kind of the gold standard, the written application part. I felt very well-prepared for the process because of what, what, what the process was in Kansas. And so there was a written application that we submitted, and in December is when I found out I was a finalist. And I couldn't believe it. When they called me, I thought maybe my ticket was being upgraded to first class or something, because I had just, you know, booked my ticket to California. She was like, you probably know what I'm calling about. I was like, I literally no idea. And so when she said I was a finalist, I was so shocked and surprised. But after that, you know, increase in things to do, one was to prepare for induction, which, you know, CCSSO is really clear that it is not an interview. But you can tell people are watching and intentionally interacting with all the finalists and connecting with them. And so thankfully, I felt pretty good about my skill to talk with people and connect with them, because that's something that I love to do. The really, really hard part was when we had to go to Washington DC and we had to prepare a keynote speech for a group of seventeen different heads and members of various educational organizations across the United States. And we had a ton of different kinds of questions. And then we also had a mock media interview where they tossed us some like really hardball questions and looked at our strategies about how we interact with the media and how we represent ourselves in education. And I felt, you know, all the other finalists were incredible, you know, from Ohio and Montana and Louisiana. I came out of that experience not, literally not knowing who it was going to be, because they were all so incredible. And so when they called me the next day, when I got home from Washington DC, I was very surprised to hear. And I had to sit on that information for a few months because of the pandemic. But I, the whole experience was just incredible. You know, I've never, these opportunities are things that I never thought I would have to get to advocate. You know, I met with Jerry Moran and several other legislators while I was there. I am definitely not going to take this opportunity for granted. You know, I get to have this position, my husband and I jokingly call it "at court." Like now I have a position at court where I can be heard and teacher voices can be heard. And I think that was the most meaningful thing for me in the whole experience.
Thank you, and a question for Dale. Do we have a budget to send our whole entire team with her, our Teacher of the Year team?
Yeah. I would love that. I miss my team.
I heard Dale laughing.
We can't even give you free water, right?
Getting ready for allocations. We made sure, Randy and I planned this way back when. We made sure that we helped out the Winfield Schoolers who are going to salary this year. That was planned a long time ago.
And that was incredible. That has been, you know, something that is, I worried about, you know, being from a small rural district, and that support means the world to me, and it means that, you know, you encourage what I'm doing and you encourage, again, elevating teacher voice, which I've always felt from Kansas, and this just, you know, goes on to prove that.
The other thing that the Board may not be aware of, tell me if I'm wrong on this, they provide all our expenses and all our travel, but they do not pay any salary at all. Their salary has to be paid by the district, their home district, to do that. So we try to do our part.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments, Board members? Jean Clifford? There you go.
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate you again, Tabitha. That's wonderful. We are so proud of you and so proud to have you in Kansas. But I was kind of wondering if since some of these will be Zooms, if there's any opportunities maybe for us, if we're available to kind of sit in and listen in on some of the speeches or the talks that you're going to be giving.
That is a great question, and I actually meet this afternoon with CCSSO, so I'll bring that up. And so maybe we can sort of pass along the public events to share with you guys.
Not, not any pressure from us or anything.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments, Board members? I'm watching to see. Okay, well, the Commissioner would like to have-
Thank the Board and thank Tabitha. Guys, as good as it gets. I really believe that, you know, this first time it's happened ever since the State Board was ever determined, ever elected.
Yeah. I think Randy, Randy-
No, I just, Tabitha knows this, you know, we're all so excited. It's kind of like, you know, the clamp that's going to Beverly Hills, and you got the cement pond, and we all got to be a part, right? We're all family. We want to be a part. So what Jean's trying to say, if we can't go with you, you know, we got to figure out a way to share this moment with you. So we're just so excited, as Dale said, to have you represent pre-K and also represent Kansas, Tabitha.
Thank you. Tabitha, if you've got some social media things that we can follow, you might want to let Peggy know, and she can send that out to us, and maybe we can follow along on your trips.
Yes, I would love that. And I recently started something called Feature Friday, where I'm featuring early childhood educators from across the country, and I'm like seeking submissions as like just another way to elevate, you know, the work of early childhood educators during this time where we can't be together. So we'd be looking out for those.
Yeah. Well, just, yeah, kind of let Peggy know, and she can get some information to us, because I have a feeling you've got some, a whole new group of fans here. Okay, anything else for Tabitha? Okay, well, Tabitha, again, thank you. Best of luck to you on your travels. I know it'll be quite an experience. And again, sometime we, maybe once you get through about half of the year or so and you're back home, and you just are dying to drive up to Topeka sometime.
You know, I miss being on the road. I didn't think that I would, but I kind of do.
We would be glad to have you sometime in the future to kind of hear about what's going on in your experiences. So have wonderful, wonderful time. I know you'll represent the state of Kansas as well and also preschool education. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Okay, Board members, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is an action item on the Higher Education Preparation Program Standards for Building Leadership for Pre-K 12 and District Leadership for Pre-K 12. And we've got, oh, Michelle's back and Catherine. Hey, look like you're joining us today. Well, welcome and walk us through this. And then this is, as I mentioned, an action item. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, member of the Boards. Commissioner Watson, we're happy to bring the professional ed standards for building and district-level leadership back to you as Catherine gets ready to possibly roll through the slide presentation she shared with you in March. On your screen also, you'll see Cheryl Redding, Professor at the University of St. Mary, who has been quite helpful in our work on these standards. And for those of you who don't know, I came to the position at the State Department of Education out of a superintendency and also Assistant Superintendency Building Leader. So these standards were kind of a passion for me. I was pleased when Catherine said, by the way, these are going to be a first set of standards that you're going to need to hover over and to help work through. They, I think Catherine would tell you, not often do standards go through the level of rigor that this particular group has gone through. It was at my urging that I sent them back once prior to a public comment, and then I am very thankful that you all gave your thoughts, your opinions, your edits, your concerns to them as well. And I believe you'll find your input displayed in the work that Catherine's going to share with you briefly. So thank you for the time today.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much for all your attention you've given to these. Just as a reminder, and you hear this each time, these are the standards that the higher eds use to prepare their candidates in their programs. These are also the standards used to monitor programs and redesign them. And there are two types of standards. There are the professional education standards that you looked at at the very beginning of this standards revision process. And then we are going through every single endorsement and license area. And so we are bringing the building leadership, and then after that, district leadership to you. You can see on here specifically the edits that you all recommended in March in red font. And that is emphasizing that promotion and advocacy of social emotional and really emphasizing inclusively every single individual in the school building and then later in the district. Intentional collaboration, bringing in very specifically community members and business leaders. And then not just cultivating relationships, but building partnerships using it more active language, specifically business stakeholders. And then you all also wanted emphasis on financial management and fiscal budgeting. And so we have that added to a function two there. And I just brought up indicator six two one, because it was already there specifically. So there's no change to that, but to point out that it already existed. And that is the extent of the changes to building leadership. This is the overview crosswalk from last time. Did you all have any questions about building? Or I could show you the changes made to district.
Catherine, why don't you go ahead and show us the changes made to district, and then you can take the PowerPoint off so we can see everybody. That's a little easier for me to call on.
Okay. So these are the changes specifically for district. Again, advocating for social emotional and being inclusive and very deliberate in every single, you know, each student and adult intentionally collaborating, building partnerships, bringing in business stakeholders, and then emphasizing again that financial management and fiscal planning. And then this is the crosswalk that you've seen before. I will stop sharing so we can see each other.
Okay, you ready for questions, Catherine?
Yes.
And it looks like we also have Cheryl Redding here also, so she can answer any questions. So Board members, we have a question from Steve Roberts. And you're good, Steve. Go, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In my view, this is central to what's wrong with the system. We fill out documents full of boxes, and then we say we've really accomplished something. So, and I've addressed this before. As an engineer, when I think of a standard, I think of something that can be measured. So I want to draw your attention to page seventy-one. It's the last entry on our materials, page seventy-one. It's 1.1.5. It would be professional skills. And here's what it says. Collaboratively design a school mission and vision attentive to values and priorities that include data, technology, values, equity, diversity, digital citizenship, social emotional well-being, academic needs, and community. And that is one little box in a very large document. Folks, this is what needs to change, as much as anything, in my opinion. I'll be voting no, because this takes us down the path away from innovation, welcoming the public into the process, trusting our citizens to be part of the process, which is central to making this thing work better in a technical age. This takes us in the wrong direction. I'll be voting no.
Steve, what page did you say?
Page seventy-one. It's the last box on page seventy-one of our materials.
Thank you.
It's just one of the examples.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments, Board members? Anne Ma? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. We always hear, well, they, when we have teachers who shouldn't be teaching, they don't know how to get rid of them. And a building leader particularly has to be, I think, a good HR manager as well as a leader. So are you guys convinced that what we have in here is going to teach them how to be good managers of people and trainers and know how to fire them when they need to?
I am more convinced than I was previously, and I believe the document is written in such a way now that universities can communicate the high levels of leadership, to your point, Mrs. Ma, about the intricacies of maintaining high-quality staff and allowing local school boards to evaluate superintendents at that level and superintendents to evaluate principals at that level.
Okay, well, having it on a piece of paper and actually doing it are two different things, so time will tell. But I appreciate that we're making an effort to move that way.
Okay, other questions? Somebody had, Michelle, Michelle Dombrowski. Second, Michelle. Okay, go ahead, please.
The biggest red flag, and I know that, I know how important early childhood education is becoming, especially in the state of Kansas. I keep looking at that line that says pre-K, and there's two sets of licensings at the bottom. I just want to make it a point that, I mean, like birth, they keep talking birth of five, and those are crucial years. And I always agree and try to vote on things where there's children that are at risk. I try to do that as much as possible. I just feel that, 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 I really like the focus of K through 12, because I talked to so many parents, and they're like, I don't want kindergarten. I mean, everybody disagrees on what kindergarten readiness is. When I asked them, they're like, well, I just want my kid to play, or I just want, and a lot of these early childhood education centers that are- and a lot of these early childhood education centers that are popping up everywhere are beautiful. And they're beautiful inside and they have beautiful children inside, but I don't know how happy our workers are that are inside. And I, I think that there's such a push for curriculum. We talk about curriculum standards and it's this standard and meeting that standard, that there's such a push to get ready for kindergarten where that's supposed to be a time where they're playing. And, and that, not always can they be with their parents because both parents are working, but I just think that that needs to be something that push more private, push more community and, and, and not more, not so much from the state's point of view, but more community, more push for private and, and more push for not, excuse me, not pushing for kindergarten readiness and what that looks like. If we have, if we're talking about a time where the board needs to sit down, we need to really sit down and find out, are those teachers in those early childhood education buildings in the state of Kansas, how happy are they? Because I go to some of these preschools and my two, my two children went two days a week and they just went for a few hours. And I was, I sat on the board at that, at that church. And most of those people were either parents that had a child there and they just wanted to be there with their children during the day, or they were retired teachers and they just needed a supplemental income, but they loved kids so much and they loved being around children that they wanted to be around those children. And they didn't care what the pay was. So I just want to make sure that we're not pushing the pre-K as much unless it's something that we're trying to reach out to those kids that are at risk in our, in our, in our communities need to know who those children are and reach out and help them as much as possible. That's my, that's my voice for today. Thank you for your time.
Any comments, Michelle, on that?
Those were my comments on that.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. I meant Michelle Miller.
No, thank you. Thank you, though, for all of the comments. Thank you.
Michelle, the question related to what Michelle Dombrowski just said. There are different licensers for pre-K, are there not? And maybe you could, because, you know, I know there's stuff that dovetails directly into, but then there's some other licensure for pre-K. Would you kind of explain a little bit of the difference there? I don't know if that's Catherine's question or Michelle's.
There are a couple of licenses that cover those younger years. Early Childhood Unified has a birth to grade three and a birth to kindergarten endorsement levels.
By the teacher's side, not administrative.
On the, on the teacher's side. The, the building and district administrative licenses, though, are specified in the regs as pre-K to twelve.
Okay, all right. Well, I just think it's good for folks to understand that specifically on the teacher's side, there are a couple of different licenses, which I actually think is pretty helpful in some regards. Because some communities are small communities, they certainly need the birth through, through third grade and others can really focus just on birth through, through K. I'm not sure exactly what it is, so, okay, thank you. Okay, other questions, board members? Deana Horst? There you go, Deana, you're on now.
Yeah, okay. When I've looked at some of the content of different schools and the kind of things that they offer course-wise. And they seem to be different in a lot of ways and they don't, because our standards are really broad, there are a lot of the specificity is kind of lost in some, to some extent. So some of the things that Anne was addressing, when I went through administrative classes at K-State, there were a lot of things that were included in coursework that she's addressing. But I'm not sure every, every school, every college or university includes all of those things. So, do we monitor any of that? So, we don't just give them the standards and say, go do what you want to do? So who monitors it?
The programs are reviewed by peers in the field for alignment to the standards every seven years, and then every year they turn in an annual report as a whole unit. But the, the individual endorsements, it's a seven-year review. And with that, they need to provide three cycles of data. And at any point in there, if a concern comes up, a new review can be initiated. And, and I can also ask Dr. Redding if she had additional comments on that process because she does an awfully lot of reviews, which I dearly, dearly appreciate.
Dr. Redding, see if we can get you unmuted. Okay, you're good. Go ahead, please.
Thanks. Yeah, the program reviews that are done every seven years are done by looking at data which demonstrates the candidate proficiency and meeting the standards. So all of the data is aligned to the standards that you see. The institutions all have to have, you know, assessments that measure the candidate's capabilities and knowledge and performance toward meeting those standards. And that's what the review team is looking at. If the team feels like they're not meeting the standards, it comes back not met. And a program can go down for that and they'll have to revise it.
Licenseure is based on program completion and passing of the building level or district level assessment as well. Both of those pieces are required before that endorsement can be added to a license.
Okay, Jim Porter has a question. Jim, go ahead, please.
Thank you. This may be a stupid question. We are approving standards today and there's a seven-year cycle. Does that mean that schools or higher institu-, higher education institutions that went through the program last year has six years before they have to implement these standards?
It means they have six years before they have to provide three cycles of data as evidence that they've been doing it. They will get, typically, they take two to three years to realign all their programs because they have to realign the courses and identify in the syllabi how it aligns to the standard. They'll have to realign their assessments. And that takes a while if you have to put it through a curriculum committee. So they will, programs will start being reviewed using these new standards in three years. And they will start redesigning immediately. I've had a couple of really lovely folks who check in with me on a monthly basis as to the process of this change because they're already putting the new standards as a draft into their syllabi that they're planning to use for fall, and they need to know when they can finalize that and send it where it needs to go. I've had the same. I've had universities calling and saying, are they ready? Are they approved? We're ready to move forward on implementation.
Well, you also have some that'll wait to the last minute?
Yes. I, probably. More likely, it's the very small programs that will redesign but may not have a lot of candidates go through. And so they'll struggle to have enough data.
My very limited experience as a employee of a higher education institution out of my long career, that's only two years, was that they didn't move very fast.
Sorry. Slugg. It takes a while, but also they're planning so far ahead. The catalog has already been cut for the fall semester. And so that is why some of this takes a while to change. Any change made now probably couldn't go into effect until not this coming fall, but the following fall, because it needs to go through the internal curriculum committee. It needs to go into the catalog. So they're, they're definitely planning ahead.
And I would say this. Due to the vision you all have cast for education in Kansas, higher ed is probably more attuned, more aware and more involved in these types of decisions than they ever have been, been before. Dyslexia and the task force work there that was highly impactful for higher ed and the work that they do to prepare our candidates. The same is true around these standards as well, because, Jim, I have those concerns coming to the agency. Seven years, I said to Catherine, that's crazy. So, that three-year cycle of data is helpful. That means they have to collect the data, even though we're not standing at their doorstep saying, have you implemented yet?
Okay, well, thank you, and I'll get off my soapbox.
Any other comments or are we ready for a motion? Oh, Michelle, Michelle Dombrowski? Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, so Michelle and Catherine, so is this going to apply to, is this applying to like all, like the state schools, like public schools and private, all accredited schools from the state, correct? As far as like that are, that are learning through higher ed, they're going out and it would apply to other, other schools that are already in place right now, like that are in, you know, like they're popping up all over in churches and stuff like that. Is that going to, are they going to have to carry this out or are they going to have to?
No, no. Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. This applies just to the teacher preparation institutions, the twenty-four institutions that can recommend a completer for a license.
So this is public and private?
Right, public and private universities in Kansas.
To just, just to prepare, to prepare them for pre-K through twelve?
To prepare them for a KS, for a, a teaching license.
Well, these particular ones are leadership, correct?
Building level and superintendent level license.
Leadership license. These are the endorsements that are added to a teaching license.
Okay, right, thank you.
Randy?
I just want to make sure, Michelle, that, that, that you understand. So the twenty-four institutions would be public and private, so like Mid-America Nazarene or University of Kansas, but does not apply to private institutions that do not have a teacher preparation program. Does that make sense?
Okay, other questions? Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, Ben Jones? Go ahead, Ben.
I was scrolling up there. I was just doing the math real fast. And they said we had twenty-four institutions and thirty percent of them are in my district. Thanks for the little stat. It is, I moved that the Kansas State Board of Education approved the new educative preparation program standards for building leadership pre-K 12 and district leadership pre-K 12.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Deana Horst? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Okay, we have a vote is nine to one with Steve Roberts in opposition. Okay, thank you, Dr. Redding. Thank you, Catherine and Michelle. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we are going to move on to the next item, which is an item, agenda item number fourteen, which is an update on the Mental Health Intervention Pilot Program. And it looks like Dale's starting us up and I see Verl on there too, so welcome.
Thank you. The board members, you may recall that we sent your material, but we had a pilot program for mental health intervention program. We had nine schools last year. This year, we got expanded a little bit more money. We have thirty-two schools. They're listed on page one hundred and nine if you want to see the schools. It's a good cross-section of school districts, small, large, across the state. And what this boils down to is they employ a school liaison person, normally a social, a social worker. And the social worker will work the school district, the school attendance center. They'll try to identify kids who may need help. Then the community mental health center will come in and, and help provide that service. But here was the big secret of all that, and, and we show that on the screen for just a minute. I want to show you the, the, yeah, the, the data. We have to collect data on this. I don't have to, but we do. It's important, we think, that we show the results. So, if you take a look at that, the number of students served this year was three thousand nine. The number of students with intake completed and services not started, it was eighty-two. Hundred and thirty-four with intake planned but not completed. We had nine hundred and fifty-eight kids with improved attendance. That's worth a lot. Improved attendance. Students showing improved external behavior, twelve hundred and sixty-six. Improved athletic performance, nine hundred and thirteen. Improved internalizing behavior, eight hundred and forty-four. Dropping out of school was only eleven. Think about that, only eleven. Moving out of the school district, hundred and twenty-eight. Three hundred and fourteen non-foster kids served. No, yeah, not, three hundred and nineteen foster kids served. Twenty-six hundred and ninety non-foster kids served. They served so far, twenty-eight hundred and twenty-nine. Now, this is, as of just recently, we'll get another final of the year report. But when the legislature did this, they wanted us to make sure that we had an evaluation accounting. This is a summarized version of it, but it's important to note that a lot of this was helped, was developed by the school district. What they wanted, what they needed, and that, and it worked quite well. The other thing on this program has made it successful. Diane Jurstad and Verl Peter both worked part-time in it. Diane's on the road a lot. She has a charming personality and when there's a problem, she's there before the problem is even known, just about. And, and Verl's done a lot of work on helping us in this process and all the paperwork involved. Now, before we kind of open it up, and Craig's got two dignitaries he wants to introduce. But before we do that, I want you to know that next year, where we stand on this, your legislature gave us another, a little over three million dollars more. We're up over twelve point six, seven million dollars. And, but we don't know if that'll be there or not. The governor has to issue allotments. Allotments means you have, things you have to do to balance the budget. We think the program will be there. The amount of money that will be available is a little bit unknown yet, just so that you know that. And we'll probably know that before your next board meeting, how much money that we'll have to work with. But the governor's been very supportive of the program and the legislature has likewise. So we're kind of thrilled about that. But some of the peoples involved in the program are, can tell you some unbelievable stories. We're going to get, hear those a little bit. But if that money holds, the, the number, thirty-two districts, we think could easily go up to fifty or sixty next year, easily. So Craig, before we open it up, let the board ask a question. We have two dignitaries. Eric, then I'll let you introduce and tell them who we got.
All right, we're fortunate to have two individuals with us today who were new to the program this year. They're part of the, the twenty-three new districts that were added and had very good, highly recommended programs. And they've agreed to share some of their experience and, and knowledge with us. So from USD four fifty-three in Leavenworth, we have Kim Knight. And from USD three twenty-nine in Wabash County, we have Emily Henderson. And I'll let the two of you decide who, who goes first and who follows which. And thank you for, for joining us.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kim Knight. I'm up in Leavenworth, USD four fifty-three. Fortunately, Emily and I talked really quick ahead of time, so we knew who was going to go first. But I'm going to share some information with you about our program that I am so incredibly proud of. I am very appreciative that we even get the opportunity to tell you guys about how successful it's been. And just, I, I can't even thank you enough, all of you, for supporting the program and hopefully, assuming we can continue it on next year, to continue to grow. I'm going to show you really quick. I, I have a, a fast presentation I want to go through. I gave a similar presentation, actually, to my Board of Education a few weeks ago, just to get them some information about how our, our numbers have looked and how successful our kids have been. But I think the most profound thing you'll see is we did a survey of students to see how the, how the program impacted them. how the, how the program impacted them, and their own words described this so much better than I ever could have. First thing I'll, I'll kind of mention is that we had to, when we first started this program, we really had to change the culture of our building, just to make sure that everybody understood the importance of mental health and how big of an impact it can have on a student. For people that have been in the education world, you understand that our job obviously is to educate people, however, if they're not in a place to be educated, it's virtually impossible. So when you have a student that comes to school that's dealing with whatever else is going on in their world, and they're not ready to focus, or they're so overwhelmed by mental health issues that they can't even get to school, that's where a program like this can step in and help a kid really turn it around and be successful. So our change of culture started really with our teachers and with our counselors and our administration. So we started with explaining to our administration and our counselors how much more they could do if they had the time to do it. So our counselors, over the course of this year, I went straight to them and I said, what did you notice throughout this year? What was the big difference? What they said was they had an unbelievable amount of time that they could actually provide things like mediation and post-secondary application assistance, 504 case management, they had all this extra time because they weren't working with students who were just going through the same crisis over and over and over because they were unable to actually treat the initial, you know, the root cause. So our counselors gained a lot of time where they could provide additional support to our students. In addition, our administration and our teachers, we really looked for our kids that were struggling, whether it was through attendance or grades or whatever behavior, we looked at those and then we looked to see if there was a link to something in the program that could help them, and we started looking at it as a resource for our kids. We linked them directly to our school-based resource, or our school-based therapist, her name is Ruby, I will reference her a couple times later in the presentation. But we also worked with our student intervention team so that we could make better informed decisions for our students. That did actually lead to identifying some students with severe emotional, like basically disabilities, we had IEPs that came out of it, but we provided some amazing interventions for some of those kids, and we worked with our school-based therapist to provide some behavior plans that could go directly back to our teachers to help the kids be more successful. When we set the direction at the very beginning, I know you guys know about this, but the Jason Flatt Act with the, the suicide awareness training that we do at the beginning of the year, we talked a lot about our national and local suicide statistics. So I specifically took a part in that, and we used a lot of the Kansas communities that care statistics so that we could make it very real for our people. They understood that our students answered these questions about suicide risks and depression in our community. We also really reinforced trauma-informed instruction, so that was all how we kind of set the course of things. We also explained to our crisis intervention team and to our administration that having a school-based therapist and a, a mental health liaison in our building really helped with crisis response. So for example, this year, we did have a student who was experiencing homicidal aviation. We had a student who actually attempted suicide at school, which was something that we had to respond to immediately, and then we've had students that struggle with pretty severe psychosis or panic attacks where our school-based therapist has been there instantaneously to respond to those issues. Our program data, like Viral said and what Dale, Dale said, it, it speaks for itself, honestly. However, when you start talking about 8% of our school population, we're a school of about 1,300 here at Leavenworth High School, we've had 102 students that have seen our school-based therapist for one reason or another. 41 of those are receiving ongoing services and 28 have been referred to related services. So that would be things like case management or med management. Our improvement data, we monitor four different areas, so externalized behaviors, academic performance, rate of attendance, internalized behavior. We saw improvement in every one of those areas for students that were monitored, and the biggest improvements were in external and internalized behaviors. Obviously, internalized behaviors, you know, we have students that were struggling a lot less with even things like cutting, and in the external behaviors, we did see a big reduction in office referrals, so students getting sent out of class less. Obviously, students that are sent out of class less are more successful in the classroom. For the program participant survey results, this is where we did something a little unique to our program, we asked the kids exactly how they felt. And 86% of those students that were surveyed, surveyed said that they felt that visiting with Ruby, our therapist, had helped them be more successful in school. So I asked for specific quotes, what were, you know, what were some examples, how, how you were more successful? One student said, I'm less anxious around people in class. One said, she makes me want to be here and do good work so I can have a better future. Another one said that she'd helped, helped me learn how to calm myself enough and manage my anxiety in order to stay in class and stay focused. And probably the most impactful, a student actually said that she had definitely helped me not only stay in school, but stay alive. In addition to that, we asked how many thought that we should offer this service again next year? 100% of our students said yes, we should offer it next year. And when we said, what do you think other people should know about the program? A student said, there's someone safe in school to talk to, even if they don't have anyone to speak to that they trust, that they should be grateful that the program is offered here, that some schools are not as fortunate and cannot offer services to students in need. I hope that the program continues because it can continue to help students struggling who may not be able to get help outside of school. That's really what makes this program unique. We get rid of barriers, barriers of getting kids to a facility, and we bring the help straight to them so they can be successful here. Obviously, a very well-written kid that we have here at school said, it's not a bad thing to see a mental health professional. They can help you work, work through difficult problems that you may not be able to work through alone or with each other. It's another layer of support for you, your child, or your student. Being a teen, being alive, is difficult, and when things go awry, anything can set you off. It can be as small as someone stepping on your shoe in the hall. Having someone right there to talk to may just stop you from hurting yourself or others. I feel it would be an extreme disservice to the students if you discontinued this program. Like I said, I couldn't say it any better myself. The, the kids have a way with words. In the interest of time, I'll tell you just some really quick anecdotes, but prevented suicides, we did have a student who was reported to our system, and we moved through our referral process, discovered that, through that process, that the student did have a full suicide plan, had actually started the plan in motion, had said his goodbyes, had written his notes, had brought his favorite teacher a Starbucks that morning as a farewell gift, and just through our program, it came out that he was going to attempt suicide that night and had the means to do so. But we feel that without this program, we probably would have lost that student. We have prevented suspensions because when a student gets escalated, instead of an administrator having to step in immediately and try to get order, we have a place where they can go and talk to somebody to calm back down. We have multiple students that have been able to regroup and end up back in the classroom without having multiple days' suspensions. And dealing with trauma, just last year, we had 20 students lose a parent through, you know, cancer or car accidents, or I, we've had a few students whose parents have been murdered. And so dealing with that kind of trauma in the classroom, teachers are not equipped for that. Our school-based therapist steps in, helps students work through that and remains focused on their education. I do want to throw in there that we did continue to respond during COVID-19. Our school-based therapist offered services through telehealth. We had, our, our mental health service request was sent directly to students, so we sent something out just saying, if you feel like you're struggling and you want some help, reach out to us. We had probably 10 students do that. We did transfer our consent to online format so that we didn't have to meet in person at all, and our teachers continued to refer students very regularly, and that's all based on that change of culture that we had at the beginning. Lastly, I'll mention that even before this grant came out, this was something that our district had identified as something that we needed, that we had students that were struggling in ways that we couldn't help. We felt they couldn't be successful in education until we got them the, and so we had reached out to our county commission, actually back in 2018 is when it started, and in response, our, the, the county commission, Leavenworth County Commission formed a task force in 2019 in response to look at adding a school-based therapist. Our task force consisted of the city mayor, city commissioners, a county commissioner, our CMHC director, our chief of police, our sheriff, our county attorney, our homeless shelter director, some leaders, and then myself as the school representative. And really, our goal was to look and see how we could get this program here in our buildings and in the entire Leavenworth County and make it sustainable. So the key rec, major recommendation, the biggest expense of recommendations from that task force was that we add school-based therapists to all schools in Leavenworth County. That is something that will be voted on by the citizens of Leavenworth County originally. It was scheduled to be on the August ballot, however, with COVID, it is postponed currently. But it is something that we want to go, to be an ongoing thing. We don't want it to have to be a state grant every year because we feel it's so important and so vital that we want to make sure that everybody can continue to have that service. So that's basically just of my presentation. I will turn it over to Emily. I just want to say once again, I am so proud of our state for taking this on and giving this opportunity to our students to be more successful. You know, we have seen nothing but amazing things come out of it, and we have seen kids that have performed at levels we never even thought possible before this. So thank you.
Thank you, Kim. My name is Molly Henderson, and I am the school liaison for USD 329 in Wabunsee. Pull up my presentation very quickly. So here in Wabunsee County, our mental health intervention team focuses a lot on providing access to care and services for our rural community and enhancing our connection and our collaboration between our communities, our schools, our students and our families to surround them with that network of support, providing them with resources and education to help our students overcome obstacles. We serve five school buildings that are within a 30-mile radius, so we're a little spread out as a school district, and here in Wabunsee County, we are five times the national average in death by suicide. So I put this data here just to show you the impact that just a few months with this program can have on the progress of our students. I began my position in late October, so our first progress report was about a month in, and you can see the rapid progress that was made within a few months of being in this program. This program is saving lives in our schools. This program is helping our students to graduate, reducing expulsions, and helping to address the mental health and behavioral health needs of our students within our buildings. We had a student who was placed in foster care who was in need of crisis services, and within that school day, we were able to connect the foster care agency, the foster family, and Crosswinds to get an intake and ensure that that student was going to have services and make sure that they were going to be safe, both in and out of our school building. Our team was also able to surround students impacted by additional stressors and anxiety when presented with school closures, to surround our students with a network of support, and continue to address their mental health needs and engagement and continuous learning to ensure that we had our seniors that were graduating and that we were able to keep them engaged during that time. Further, this program has provided us with the opportunity to enhance our supports for students experiencing trauma and work as a school and a mental health agency together to create plans to support externalizing and internalizing behavior of our students. This quote from an educator just really shows the opportunity that this program has to reach and support our teachers and administration in addressing the needs of our students within the classroom, and just demonstrates the need for these services in our schools to help those educators to continue to support our students as we go through our school year. Community engagement, so last winter, our community was struck by tragedy, and part of our response was to create the Wabunsee County Mental Health Task Force, and this was a partnership between our mental health intervention team, local law enforcement, the health department, and our student-led mental health initiative, Yellow Ribbon. We titled this presentation, Not One More, Not One More Wabunsee County Suicide. So we wanted to come together to learn, to heal, to develop a plan, and when we created these town halls, we expected that we would maybe have 50 people attend, and we were blown away with the support from our community when nearly 200 community members attended, which is huge for our rural community. We also had 15 community of business, community businesses agreed to be links for our students, so this means that they will have Yellow Ribbon materials in their buildings and that they have become a place that students can come to when they need help or when they're thinking of suicide. This is also an incredible opportunity to communicate our program with stakeholders and get our message out about the supports and opportunities that we have for our students inside of our school buildings, and this was represented through our KCTC data that came out this week too, to show the impact that this is making on our students. We had students who responded yes to seriously considering killing themselves in the last 30 days go down from 10% to 3%. Resilience, this is something I talk a lot about with our students, and it, it's not more representative than what we've been placed in currently. So when we were presented with change, our biggest thing was communication, letting everyone know that we are still here. We continued providing services, continued with referrals, continued with the intake process throughout the entire pandemic. And I ended up creating a website, which is something that a lot of liaisons across the state did, to enhance that communication with our families while we were apart physically. So I created a parent referral form for parents to refer their students. We had a lot of journaling activities for students to be able to scale what the need was, social-emotional development, Yellow Ribbon hotline, Crosswinds COVID-19 hotline. We're engaging with grade-level zooms to be able to provide them with skills to support their mental health while they were apart, and working with each of our teams to identify a student needs while we were outside of our physical buildings. And so I just want to say thank you for your guys' time today and continuing to support these needs. It's made such a huge impact in our schools and across the state, so I'm very proud to be a part of this program and proud to see the progress that is going through. So I will hand it back to Diane and Viral.
Okay, who's up next?
Viral, Viral and Diane, do you have 15 seconds worth of comments you want to make?
I, I think, yes, I tell you what, I, I think you can see from Kim and Emily's presentation how excited we are about the program, and we have more and more people out there in the districts just like Kim and Emily, and they've really done a super job on helping kids. And, you know, the pandemic made a, made a difference at the end of the year, but we were heading to double the number of students that we served a year ago. We had about 1,700 a year ago, and we're, we'll probably finish up around 3,200 kids that have been seen, and it's heartwarming to see the, the successes they've had, and we're looking forward. We've already had a, a number of districts contact us about the program. We're having applications come in June the 18th, so we'll have a better, better feel for, for them at that time. But there's been, because of the success, the stories like Emily and Kim have, have given us, other districts are interested in the program, and so we anticipate to adding, adding, to adding other districts this coming year. So it's just been a privilege to work with, with people like Kim and, and Emily and Diane and on this program, and we see the, some really good benefits coming out of it.
Diane, your 15 seconds.
Thank you, Dale. Well, I think what you've listened to and heard from Emily and Kim is the, the unique programs they've been able to put together, and that's one of the great things about this grant, is they're able to be flexible and meet the needs of their community. Wabunsee County, Alma, they had some tragedies there, they were able to work directly with their law enforcement to create some community outreach, and the Yellow Ribbon Program, that peer-to-peer work that Emily's doing, and of course, in Leavenworth County, all the things that they're doing to have a ballot initiative to support mental health, that is really groundbreaking in the state of Kansas, and I'm so excited to watch what they're doing and share that information with our other districts.
Kathy, any questions any of the board may have, so with, why, any of the people that spoke, be glad to predict a notion in the school district, so we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody, and Kim and Emily, thank you so much for presenting what your district has done, and I believe you were one of the new districts, both, one of the new districts this last year. So this program's obviously made a difference for you. So I think there's probably some questions from board members because I saw them all sit up a little straighter when we were coming towards the end of this, so they're ready to get their hand up so they can ask questions. So I'm sure there's questions, so we'll be prepared. Ben Jones will be first. Ben, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I did hear about the news that I'm Wabunsee, I share that district with, with Mrs. Ma, and it's just heartbreaking, and Alma sits in my district, and I know I got a, an opportunity to talk with, with Superintendent Starnes, and he was excited about the program, and... And I'll leave my personal stuff out of it, but my family's been hit with suicide in the past. And it's been a lot of years since it's happened, but it always stays with you. And the fact that we prevent one family from going through this is definitely worth it. So I applaud those workers. I'm glad that school districts are looking at it. I know in previous conversations, more superintendents are looking at it. That's encouraging. I'm excited that all my district and Sedgwick County kids have access to it with Maze Valley Center and the Haven areas, Mount Hope, have access to this. And that's exciting to see. A lot of my districts are participating and growing. And I wish we could just fund it all statewide, and we have the personnel to do it. And I encourage any district to speak out. All of my districts have been so positive, from Harrington being part of the Abilene Consortium, speaking about it, and to see the work in Reno County with Haven, Pretty Prairie, and Fairfield, very rural districts, and just the numbers are unbelievable. So I appreciate the work, and I cannot, cannot be more excited and touched by these numbers. I appreciate the presentation, exciting for the work in Leavenworth, and especially in my district in Wabunsee. I appreciate it very much, and thank you, Emily, for the presentation.
Okay, other questions, board members? Jim Porter? Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Thank you. I was very encouraging, I'm very encouraged to see that you had data on the difference. Whenever I was testifying before the legislature last year, every time I talked about social-emotional, somebody would confront me that we can only measure academic performance. How do you measure the impact of social-emotional? And you've shown me that. I would hope that whoever represents us next year in the legislature, whether that's me or somebody, or Dina or somebody else, that we have that data available to show that this is making an impact and that it's not just a feel-good, it's an actual data about attendance, about less suicides, about the reduction in the number of suicides, the external and internal behaviors, the attendance rates. Those data points are going to be very valuable as we continue to communicate the importance of and need for strong programs in social-emotional development to the legislature. Thank you for your services. Thank you for the wonderful job that you're doing. I hope that we can replicate that throughout the state.
Other questions, board members? Michelle Dombrowski? Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation and for the data today. That's very helpful. And it looks like it's worked, it looks like it is working, especially across the state of Kansas. I was looking at age disparities. It looks like, when I look at the most current statistics, our largest area of young adults that are dying by suicide in the United States is 20 to 24. So I feel like that, you know, the resources obviously need to go beyond high school. That's when they become adults, that's when they go on to more stressors in life. Maybe it's post-secondary, getting into their career. I feel like, I just don't want them to feel, I want them to get the coping skills. My biggest thing is learning how to cope with the stuff that you're dealing with. I know there's anxiety, there's different things, working through that. And hopefully that those children, now that they're getting more help, are going to be able to carry that on into adulthood. But from the age disparities I'm seeing on the suicide rates, it's very high, 20 to 24. It's still very, very high, higher than any of the other age groups. And I'm afraid that when they go off to college or whether they get into their career, they can't just run down the hallway and talk to a counselor. They can't, they're going to have to deal with what society is going to throw at them. They're going, not everybody's going to be nice, there's going to be, there's going to be struggles, and they're going to have to work through that. Hopefully, they got that through the counseling process. But I'm hoping that they don't feel like, once they graduate from high school, where's that? They're going to have to pay for that help. That help isn't going to be there for them. It's not going to be free. If they go to university, they're lucky to even see their counselor once in a semester. So I just want to make sure that when we're talking to parents, when we're talking to these students, when we're working through these anxieties and these situations that are coming at them when they're young adults and moving into that adult age, that's where I'm most concerned is, are they going to be able to cope with the struggles that are going to hit them outside of high school? Because that's when reality hits, and the world is not kind, and they need to know that. They're going to have to deal with way more than they're going to have to deal with in high school, because they're protected, and most high schools are protected. And I will just vouch for that knowing with my kids, kids are protected. But when they leave the school, that's when, and the counselors are gone, and the help is not there. What are we going to do then? So I just want to make sure that we're informing those parents and those students how to cope and deal with the reality that's going to hit them when they leave, when they leave high school. Thanks for your time.
Do any of our guests have any comments on what Michelle talked about? Okay, I do hear.
I have something to respond about coping skills.
I'm sorry.
That's something our district has really targeted a lot, especially during this continuous learning time. And school staff have actually allowed for us to come on to their weekly zooms to teach them coping skills and target that at the elementary age and continue to have that conversation when we do have wraparound meetings with our families and our students to be able to make sure that we're addressing that both outside of the school, but making sure that we are preparing the student for the road and ensuring that they are going to continue to utilize those supports and be safe outside of K through 12.
Board members, other questions?
Kathy, just might say that to the people involved in this program across the state are exceptionally dedicated. And the stories they can share with you will bring tears to your eyes. But they're very committed and loyal people to the kids of their district where they work.
If I could just ask, I don't know if it's Verl or who it is, just what's the timeline? Because I know there will be some new districts applying, so just to share with the board. Verl, I don't know if that's you?
We, yeah, I can answer that or try to answer it. But we have had to wait until after the legislature left in the May to send out applications. So we had the applications, they're due June the 18th. We plan on reviewing them shortly after that. And we were hoping to have them to the State Board in July for your July Board meeting. That will depend a little bit on what Dale mentioned about the financial situation. If we happen to get into a situation where the funding gets cut or whatever, we may have to adjust that. But our timeline right now is, would be to your July Board meeting.
Great, thank you very much. I figured that was probably about the time that we'd go with, but it's helpful to know that.
If you have anybody predict that you have an interest in it, but the applications are in the field right now.
Okay, so board members, that'd be good for all of you to know in case you have districts that are wanting to apply. It's a great opportunity. And, you know, you've got some folks right on here that are on the screen that can help them if they have questions and stuff. I'm sure anybody would be glad to help them. Dina, do you have a question? There you go, Dina, go ahead.
I was wondering, are these new applicants? Or does everyone have to reapply?
All will have to reapply, because some will want to expand. And also, we have to know the salaries, estimated and fringe benefits for each of the liaison people. So each one will have to apply.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thank you, Emily and Kim, for coming and presenting to us. And your dedication to your program is very, you can see it right there, so appreciate that. Verl and Diane, thank you for your work with the program also, and certainly Craig and Dale. So we appreciate that, you know, it's kind of an annual update, and I know we, I certainly look forward to it. I'm sure the other board members do also, so thank you very much. And enjoy the rest of your summer. Okay, we now have our next agenda item, item 15 is an update on the School Mental Health Advisory Council work. And Myron is on, I see him there, welcome, Myron. And he has a PowerPoint he's going to share with you. And it looks like we had some handouts that were in your electronic meeting folder that Peggy sent out to us yesterday. So, Myron, welcome.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you today. I do want to introduce myself. I'm Myron Melton. I am a consultant with the Special Education Title Services Team with the Kansas State Department of Education. And it's a pleasure to have some time to share with you some updates from the School Mental Health Advisory Council. So I will share my screen here with you. Okay, there we go. So for today's update, the focus primarily is going to be on actions that are being taken to address the recommendations of the Kansas Blue Ribbon Task Force on bullying. Just kind of as a reminder, in January of 2020, Kansas State Board of Education approved the recommendations of the Kansas Blue Ribbon Task Force on bullying. This is just a quick summary of what those are. To provide better support and direction to districts to utilize social, emotional, and character development as a focus for bullying prevention. Wanted to reconcile the differences in the state bullying definition and what we find in current bullying research. Wanted to assist districts in developing local plans that focus on culture and on climate and on mental health. Also looking for improved data on bullying practices and effectiveness. We're looking at addressing cyberbullying. And lastly, wanted to address training, professional development, and teacher preparation. So as we took these recommendations to the School Mental Health Advisory Council, we condensed those down really into five workgroups. You can see those here on this slide. The workgroup are definition, data, provision and resources, policy and plans, and cyberbullying. Those five workgroups have been tasked with developing guidance and resources that will assist districts as they develop the plans in their own schools and in their own districts. So we'll walk through these a little bit. You need to know as we start that each of these subcommittees have all met once, twice at the most. So what we'll be sharing with you today is really some of these initial conversations and discussions, maybe a little bit about some directions they may be heading. But you need to know that we are early in that process. We're going to start with the subcommittee on definition. And we start there for a specific reason. This is really foundational to every group. Each of the subcommittees, you'll see here, also committees express a need for a common definition and in alignment with the Kansas Association of School Board Policy. So this has been a really important group for us. They have completed their work on the definition guidance, and other committees are taking that work and utilizing it as we move forward. One of the things that we noticed there is we talked about reconciling the differences with the state definition for bullying and what we see in our, much of the research. And particularly with the task force that focused on two, what they saw as two missing pieces around a power imbalance in bullying and around bullying being repetitive. And what was found, in talking with our legal counsel, the legal counsel from KSB, is that there actually is allowable flexibility that's built into that plan. It doesn't prohibit us or for local schools for making decisions based on their local needs and still staying within those legal mandates. So the flexibility that was found there was much appreciated. And last, you'll see on there to ensure that all stakeholders fully understand the definition of bullying. The task force found, as we went statewide visiting with a number of stakeholders, that there really was not a definition that everyone had agreed upon. And it's critical, if we're going to address this, that we all have a common understanding of what that is. So going on to the bullying data. Again, it was going to be a little redundant, but the first thing that they said was if we're going to collect data, we need to collect common data, and it only comes from a common definition and understanding of what bullying is. So this group is already beginning to identify some common data sets, sources that can be used statewide that we can collect, again, common data on that can help us inform our work and inform the direction that we need to go as a council. Included in that is teacher survey perception data. This is one area the task force felt was missing, that we didn't really have the voice of our educators. And so it'll be a focus as well. The second bullet item, collaborate with developers of the Kansas Communities of Care Survey to address questions regarding participation, survey length, validity, and reliability measures. The task force did come out in favor of us continuing to use the CTC survey. It felt like it was the one piece of data that really was statewide that gave us climate and culture data. However, within that, they made recommendations to improve that, that might also enhance participation. This conversation has already started, that the data committee, which is being led by another one of our consultants, Kent Reed, has met with the developers of the CTC survey. They're very receptive and feel like that we are already on a start to moving that into a positive direction. The next committee is on bullying prevention and resources. The one thing that we noticed right off the bat as this committee started working is that we are not short on bullying prevention resources. This is not a new topic. It's been with us way too long. There have been many, many resources developed. But we haven't necessarily, as we said in one of the recommendations, given the direct guidance around how to utilize those. So one of the first things we're going to do is we're reviewing that wealth of resources that are out there, selecting those that we feel like are really quality and will help our districts move this process forward, and then categorizing those into some categories, some existing categories. Secondly, identifying gaps in those existing resources. As I said, we are resource-rich, but we recognize that there might be areas where we find those gaps, in which case it will be our responsibility to locate those resources, or if they don't exist, develop those resources on our own to make sure those gaps are filled. And lastly, to integrate resources with other subcommittees and priorities. This was really important to this group, and I think it's important, you'll hear it as a common thread with all of the subcommittees. And that is, we can't look at bullying as a standalone issue. So as we develop these resources, the recommendation from the task force was that we develop a bank of resources. This particular subcommittee felt like just a bank or a laundry list of resources and throwing them out there to districts wasn't the best way to do that. So we're really focusing on how do we integrate specific resources into these subcommittees to support their work, and just as importantly, into other priorities that districts have. So as districts focus on social-emotional growth, or they focus upon their discipline data, or their attendance data, all these areas that we know are impacted by bullying, we want to make sure that we're integrating those resources so they can use them in an easy, productive, and effective way. The next committee is bullying policy and plans. The first bullet is going to start getting redundant. Develop consistent expectations and guidance for students, families, and staff, including training on a bullying definition. So again, we're going for consistency of expectation and providing that guidance, but also acknowledging that this is not just a school problem, it's a community issue to deal with. And we need to make sure our families and our communities are involved in that discussion as well. Second, as I said, involve the whole community in developing policies and plans. So it's more than just informing people, but it's having people having a place at the table as we develop these for their communities. Consider effectiveness of local bullying policies and plans to inform best practices. This was, came as a recommendation from one of the people on this committee, acknowledging that there are places across Kansas districts who are doing this well, who have good plans in place, whose plans are producing results. This group wants to locate who those districts are and see what they're doing that are good, informed practices that can really help us in terms of defining this for all districts across Kansas. informed practices that can really help us in terms of defining this for all districts across Kansas. And lastly, consider bullying policy and plans within a context of other priorities, specifically in mental health. So we're back to that integration piece. You just heard a wonderful presentation about the mental health intervention team pilots and the way that they have begun to integrate these these programs. We feel like bullying certainly does have an impact on mental health. And we need to consider those those two things together. The last work group is on cyberbullying. We know this is a area of bullying that is particularly on a rise and something that we know we are dealing with, even though it's not real new, it's a little bit newer to us in terms of how we deal with preventing those actions. The first thing this group focused on was provide training on avoiding becoming a victim. It's important that AZ kids venture out as they all do, you know, into a digital world that we are providing them with the knowledge of understanding of how to avoid becoming a victim of bullying online. Secondly, informing them of the potential legal consequences that can come from such actions and also the disciplinary actions that could occur in school. So really informing them and giving them a good understanding of not just what it is, but how to avoid it and what could potentially happen in terms of legal and disciplinary consequences. Secondly, provide guidance to address cyberbullying incidents initiated off campus. This is an area that the definition committee wrestled with as well. And are also informing the cyberbullying about this because that isn't mentioned in that definition. And there are legal parameters around what you can do with with cyberbullying incidented or instigated in school versus something that's initiated off campus. And we feel like we need to be very clear on guidance with school districts with where their authority lies within that area. And then lastly, explore alternatives to traditional discipline. One of the things the task force found was that traditional discipline, suspensions, expulsions, long-term, you know, in school, all of that, all of those kinds of consequences that they really they address the consequence. They don't really extinguish the behavior. And in some fake cases, they might even, they might even make it worse as you begin suspending students in traditional fashion. So what we want to do is explore alternatives to that. We're not saying that there's not a place for students to have consequences, but what are we doing to mend relationships? What are we doing to repair relationships or repair relationship with the other student, with the school? To build that climate within your school that allows students to to mend those relationships, be forgiven for their behaviors, and then become a part of the school versus leaving it at just the consequence. So those are the bulk of the things that we've really been focusing on with regards to the bullying task force recommendations. I did want to focus on just a couple of other things that we have been discussing that I think are really important. First is the TAZ and School Mental Health Initiative. I know you're familiar with the TAZ and Mental Health Initiative, but they are doing some remarkable work across the state of Kansas. You're, I'm sure I know familiar with the School Mental Health Professional Development and Coaching System that they oversee. They are starting to move their work just a little bit in response to the pandemic. And they're really looking at at relationships and co-regulation and transitioning back to school. We'll have students coming back to Brixton, Warner in August that haven't been in that school setting for five to six months and rebuilding relationships are going to be critical, rebuilding trust to work in that co-regulation environment with students one-on-one, we think is going to be very important. And they are putting a lot of effort in that in that area. Another resource that they just developed and I believe we referred to this that Peggy Hill has put into your digital file is this new caregiver resource that was developed by the School Mental Health Initiative. The resources on trauma, stress, and caregiver well-being. I personally reviewed, I know a lot of people have, is excellent resource. What this provides, any district leader, building leader, community professional, what it provides them is a is a slide deck and a facilitation guide that they can really take their staff, referring to schools or districts, take their staff through a process of better understanding trauma, stress, what how it impacts students, but also how it impacts caregivers. So that we're thinking about the wellness of our staff as well. So I would encourage you to take a look at that resource. We've already talked about the Mental Health Intervention Team, so I won't focus on that other to say you couldn't be more excited to hear the stories we're hearing, to see the data we're seeing, to know that our governor and our legislature is behind this. We are excited. I know you are as well. Lastly, I want to talk just a little bit about a new resource from Castle. Castle is the collaborative for academic and social emotional learning. One of the preeminent organizations worldwide in the area of social emotional learning. We have a very good relationship with them. They just produced a new resource. They have heard often from states across the country, including Kansas, that we need resources on how to best reintegrate students into school after this pandemic. So they produce a new resource on leveraging social emotional learning as schools prepare to reopen. You also have a link to that resource as well that Peggy Hill provided for you. This is an 18-page brief. The brief gives information about what to consider, resources to consider. It's very essential for schools that they start, but the good news is Castle is collaborating with approximately another 300 contributors from other social emotional learning organizations who are working together to really produce a robust document that this is the predecessor for. So that should be coming out and available by the by the end of this month. So I would encourage you to look at those. We are widely distributing the School Mental Health Initiative caregiver resource. We're widely distributing this Newcastle resource on leveraging SEL. So when you have the opportunity to work with your districts and if they're looking for resources, we would appreciate you being able to share these as well. So with that, I will shut down my screen and welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you, Myron. Appreciate the report. Board members, do we have questions for Myron about the School Mental Health work? Ann Ma?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Myron, I don't want this to sound like I'm picking on you. I'm picking on the process here. We had a bullying task force that met quite a while, came out. I just pulled it back out, this huge report, and it's got pages of recommendations. Now we've got a committee working on the committee's work. And we had a bill, you know, that that went around the legislature this year. And the reason they did a bill was because we talk and we talk and we talk about bullying, but it doesn't change. And it's still out there. And what I heard people in the legislature say is they want teeth in this thing. They want somebody to make the schools stop bullying because they're not doing it. That's what I'm hearing. So help me with this. Is when is this going to be done? Is it going to have teeth in it? Are we going to make schools be more proactive in this?
It was a very good question. And you know, a couple of things come to mind with that. First off, before we get into the accountability piece, just in terms of how is this, I think, potentially different than what we may have seen in the past? We're seeing a lot of things come together at the same time. There's a reason we talk about this. We talk about integration a lot. You saw in a previous presentation, people are understanding the significant needs about school mental health. You see, as we talk to our our schools that are involved in the redesign, how much they recognize the need to to change climate, culture of schools. It's not just words on a paper. We've seen that. We've seen that that doesn't work. And really what we're trying to do with this when we talk about providing the guidance and the resources and really trying to get it done in a systemic way is to support those things that are currently happening. So I'm optimistic that we can be able to take this to the to the next level because I think now as opposed to us constantly just pushing things out to districts, they're reaching out to us as well and going, how can we work together to make to make this happen? With regards to the accountability issue, when we presented, Kent Reed and I presented to the the House and House Subcommittee on on the bullying recommendations, had the same question about about accountability. How do we know what's going to happen? At this point in time, this accountability piece comes through our KISA accreditation process. So what we're doing is we're having those conversations. I work with the KISA work group here at the agency and we're working on how do we how do we beef that up? You know, because it's easy for anyone to sit down and check the box and say, yeah, we did it. But was it really done with with fidelity and has it produced results? And so we're looking at that model as a way of not just doing accountability, but but working with districts to help improve those processes.
I'd like to add a little something.
I just don't remember seeing anything about, yeah, they handled bullying in these accreditation reports. So I hope there's a discussion about that. But if if we don't see some changes, I think there'll be another bill next session. Thank you.
I think we all acknowledge there is work to do. Absolutely.
And I'd like to add a little bit in the bullying task force recommendations. If you remember, they specifically said that there would be a committee to take take these recommendations to an implementation stage. And that's what the School Mental Health Advisory Council has morphed into is that committee that is going to take the recommendations and take them into implementation. And that's what is being worked on. There is a timeline with this group. We plan on having recommendations back to the board before the end of this year. This calendar year, not school year, but this calendar year. So we'll have recommendations back to this board with in all of these areas. Now, will we have everything completely done? Possibly not. But we'll certainly have recommendations back to this group. Okay, other questions? Jim Porter? Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I want to kind of follow up on what Ann said. I also testified this year about the mental health process. I think I introduced Myron and Ken at one point. And the questions of accountability keeps coming up. I I'm very encouraged about the report that we're talking about a common definition because everybody has their own definition of what bullying is. And I think that's going to be helpful. Not not completely, but it's going to be helpful because I can insult you, Kathy. And you'll probably not not consider that bullying, but other people would. And so that common definition is important. Now, the point I want to make is that we have accountability before the legislature starts because we're going to be asked that question. And if we want to keep control of the process, which I think is critical, we need to be able to address that with the legislatures in a way that they can accept.
No disagreement there. Okay. Dina, Dina Horst? Go ahead, Dina.
Jim's absolutely correct about what there what will occur if we don't have something that is acceptable to those folks. So when you talk about everyone has a different definition for bullying, I think that's well, that's obviously what part of our issue is. But my concern is that that will continue. And people will want to amend things simply because it's not their definition. So I think within this process, we need to make certain that we're incorporating those other definitions as much as we can. So somehow we address that concern also because if we don't address it to the extent accountable from an accountability point of view that addresses what concerns legislators have, you'll still see a bill that addresses it from their point of view. So I'm hopeful we are in some sort of contact with the individuals that have been actively working on that particular issue in the legislature.
We definitely are working on a definition and we actually probably have a real strong one right now, and it's based on statute. So but then we'll also be looking at an accountability piece, but we also feel like if we just do a definition and an accountability piece and we don't have the training and the resources pieces in there to support that, then we really don't have the job done. So we're working on trying to put a real comprehensive plan together to take to school districts that we will have soon. Am I saying anything wrong there, Myron?
And and I and I would say that is also a very important component. That it has to be there as well. Otherwise, you don't have any buy-in from those who are actively involved in in the accountability, in providing accountability. So I look forward to seeing what what you come up with.
Okay, Well, Myron, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and presenting to us today and giving us an update. And actually, my cyberbullying committee has another subcommittee meeting this week, so I am spending my life on Zoom this week, I think. Okay, Randy?
I think Michelle had a question, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, Michelle. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and then Dina just brought up something I was I was going to go into that survey. Myron, thank you for this and this update. I guess when you were talking about they're trying to change that survey, before it was kind of long and cumbersome for kids to take it. It was similar for sixth grade to 12th grade. We talked about shortening that. Another thing I might suggest is just like when they're taking that survey, are they taking it on a Monday? Are they taking it on a Friday? What what's going on in that child's life? We always say we need to meet the child where they are in that timeframe. And that's going to that's going to be huge when we look at the data. You know, what happened to that child on that day they took that took that took that survey? And then I talked to the dyslexic parents and they're like, where does my child fit in in the school? There there's so many, you know, there's so many things and hoops to go through. And then when they go to take those surveys, they're probably, well, one parent said they're probably picked on the most. And then those are the kids that are skipping through the survey. And they're the ones that are probably being bullied and maybe we're the ones that we need the services the most for for different reasons. And that's just what a parent expressed to me. So I guess what I'm trying to say is Dina's thing on bullying definition, maybe some of the surveys or questionnaires, you know, one district is trained, maybe within the building or the entire district, and they keep getting the same training. But then in the kids hearing this at school, they leave the building and the parents all have a different definition. So maybe maybe our surveys, we might consider going out to the parents and seeing what what does this district think in this district that we're working on right now? We're trying to change the culture. What do the parents think of bullying? What do they think the definition is? And get that feedback from the parents because you can only do so much in a day and recorrect or redirect and try to teach that child, hey, that's not what we're doing here. Then they go home and they hear a totally different, totally different definition of what bullying, oh, that's okay. You're fine. I'll protect you. I'll go into the school. So we have to also bring up bring the community in and have a partnership with our community and make sure that it's being seen throughout. I think somebody had mentioned that in one of the towns, they had it at the school, they had it on the bank, they had like a different definition of the week or something like that that made everybody smile. I was like, this is what we're focusing on. Maybe it's perseverance. And so the bank had it. The school had it. And it was just like the word of the word of the week was perseverance. And everybody persevered. And it was kind of like everyone was on the same page. I think if you're going to change the culture in the school, I think if you're going to change the culture in the school, you have to, you have to also find out what the parents are thinking. At home, because it's they're going to come back with a whole different set of definitions and depending on the family, what their upbringing is or, you know, whatever it is. So I just wanted to put that out there to suggest that to the committee that. You can focus on the teacher training and the administration. But if the if the parents and the aren't aren't involved in the partnership of that, I am are the voice, I would say we're we're kind of just spinning our wheels. So that's my two cents for the day.
Thank you. Appreciate your feedback.
Yeah, and with Jane Groff on our committee. We definitely are focused on parents, believe. And parents and families. So yeah, appreciate that. Okay, Board members, again, thank you, Myron. Board members, we're going to take a 10 minute break. I have about. Two fifty three or two fifty four, so. Go ahead and. Stop your video for 10 minutes and then we'll be back. Okay, go get started. Hello, Linda. Board members, we are on agenda item number 16, which is going to be act on recommendations of. Professional Practices Commission, which is a denial. The actual agenda item is on page 115 of your agenda. If you want to look at them. You hear me? Okay. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Okay, all right, but the actual packet of information starts on 117. Okay, Linda, turn it over to you. Okay, Linda, we could unmute Linda. Okay, Wendy, you should be unmuted.
All right, good deal. Sorry about that. The Professional Practices Commission. Had recommends that the Board of. Education denied. The applicant's E sub license. This is a case that initially came to us in December. Of 2019 and. The PPC initially recommended granting this. E sub license, new information, new evidence was brought before the PPC and we heard that case again this spring. And so based on the underlying conduct of. The applicant, his failure to appear at the PPC hearing and his dishonesty while testifying before the PPC under oath initially. It is our recommendation that you deny. The E sub license.
Okay, wait a minute. Now I'm unmuted. Okay, this is item PP. Nineteen PPC fifty. That maybe is my computer and some feedback on. Jim Porter. Go ahead.
I moved at the Kansas State Board of Education to deny the application for an emergency substitute license for nineteen PPC fifty.
A motion to have a second. Michelle Dombrowski, any discussion or questions to Linda? If not, we'll call for a vote. So all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, nine and. Mr. Roberts is not here, so it will be a nine zero. Okay, and before we let you off the hook, Linda, my understanding is that this is your last. Time to be before us and that you've served on the PPC for. More than a few years. So thank you very much for your service. It's I know this is not always an easy thing to do, but we've appreciated your professionalism and. When you brought this information to us, it's been much appreciated and. You're gonna have some big shoes to fill.
It's been a great honor. I have appreciated having the opportunity to watch your work and I best wish you all the best. I know this will be an interesting. Nineteen twenty twenty one school year, so appreciate the work that you'll be doing. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, Board members. Item seventeen is going to be a report on work-based learning pilot program, and we've got. Stacy and Natalie and some additional guests, and I'm sure we'll let Stacy and or Natalie introduce them. It looks like they've already shared a screen, so welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the State Board of Education. I'm Stacy Smith, Assistant Director, Career Standards and Assessment Services. And I'm here to introduce people today. It was a year ago that we presented our proposal on scaling work-based learning in front of the State Board of Education, and we listened to your advice. And we went out and we did that good work and. Here to initially comment on some of the work that. We've been engaged in is Bob Kreitzer. From Southwest Kansas, he's employed at Tetro Plumbing. And I'll let Bob continue. Good morning, Bob. Afternoon, Bob. And Bob might still have his microphone muted.
Okay, I am, have I now reached you?
I hear you, Bob. You're coming through loud and clear. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having the opportunity to join today's session. Work-based learning is a phenomenal opportunity for our students, our educators, and business and industry in the state of Kansas, and. I'd like to give you a quick overview of the who, what, where, when, and why of work-based learning. Who? The concept of work-based learning involves not only. Our students and their parents through their individual plan of study, but also our school districts, our business and industry, our chambers of commerce. Our economic development people and from the state level, the Department of Education, the Board of Regents. And the Departments of Labor and Commerce. None of these groups are any more important or less important than the others. Each one has an opportunity to participate in where we're going. What is work-based learning? Work-based learning is a time-tested concept. There have been several similar states to the state of Kansas that have tried this and found it to be a fantastic. Joint venture. Between public and private entities that has delivered to the students a great opportunity. You know, we take the situation and we build on it, and the whole goal is to create the opportunity where through all of these entities. We instill those essential skills. So a student has an opportunity to be successful when they start their career. Where will this happen? The Department of Labor and Commerce has gathered a tremendous amount of data. On all of our state. And they've taken this data and they've broken our state into five regions. And they have their workforce centers in those five regions. And the school districts, two hundred and eighty six of them. Have created school service centers, and there are six of those. So we judge that we can take these two geographic separations of our state. And work with business and industry to form. A consensus on what is available in each of the regions. And we want to go into those regions and look at the high paying. High demand and critical needs jobs. Because we want to be able to share with our students the opportunity. That they have to be successful in the state of Kansas. And. The where, excuse me, the when. We've been working on work-based learning for well over a year, as Stacy mentioned. And Natalie and her troops have gone through this last semester and created pilot programs in each of the five districts. And what they've learned in each one of those situations in terms of the opportunities, they're looking at the parallels between the career pathways. That we have existingly, and we want to look at what the demands are that come out of the information given to us by the Department of Labor and Commerce. And make sure that we have a parallel situation for success. And I guess finally, why? You know, Kansas has a tremendous population of highly qualified people, and they've got a great work ethic. What they're looking for is the opportunity to succeed. We don't want them looking outside of Kansas as their first choice. We want to show them that we have the opportunities here in the state of Kansas, here in each one of our regions, that they can be successful. That they can put together all of the energies that they have that we will show them. By investing in our communities that we have a reason for them to be and stay in Kansas. Now, we know that there's a lot going on right now in terms of change in education. Our educators, the districts have had to come up with all kinds of new and different methods. And here we come asking for, oh, by the way, we would like you to do one more thing. It's going to be a test, and it's going to take us all. All of our involvement to make it work. Business and industry has to be a key player in this. And I think it can work. Our work-based learning subcommittee. Has been charged basically number one priority is to make sure that every one of our students. Who graduate are prepared for post-secondary education or are work-ready to enter the workforce. Being through a diploma, a certificate, additional apprenticeships. Any kind of internships or additional college credit. We need to make sure they're ready, and there's going to be some obstacles. Because some of the things we're learning on internships right now. An intern can only be gone for two hours. And away from the classroom. Well, by the time they get to wherever they're interning and do whatever they can and then have to leave to get back, it's not enough time. To be truly effective. So maybe we may come to you and ask for an extension of that, maybe a half a day that would allow us to be truly effective. Our second goal is that we train the students. That are leaving our educational system and are ready to enter the deal and that we retain many of those people in the state of Kansas. It's going to be a challenge, but with every challenge comes an opportunity. We're ready to take on the challenge, and we think we can be successful with all of your support. Thank you. Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Kreitzer. A great testimony there to the the many layers of work-based learning, different agencies that we have coming together from the Department of Labor and the Department of Commerce and the Governor's Office that have been. Powerful allies in this work. It's also my great pleasure to invite and introduce Jack Frederick, who is. The sitting chair for the Kansas Advisory Committee for Career and Technical Education, and he's been in that position for two years. And. Thank you for agreeing to speak today, Jack, and I'll let you introduce yourself a little bit.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of Kansas State Board of Education. My name is Jack Frederick. I'm here as the Chair of the KACCTE Kansas Advisory Committee for Career and Tech Ed. I'm a proud product of USD two five nine, where I was a two thousand and six graduate of Wichita North, and I might add. A proud graduate of Robinson Middle School when Chairwoman Chairwoman Bush was there as principal, so that was. Kind of a cool connection there. Good to see you again, ma'am. Spent some time at Pittsburgh State University, where I graduated two thousand and ten. From from that university and I'm currently the General Manager of Foley Rebuild for Foley Equipment Company. I'm here to pay a very brief testimony to the work done by KACCTE members in partnership with the State Department of Education. Generally, KACCTE members advise KSDE staff on regional economic perspectives and assist with the revisions of the thirty seven CTE pathways. The pathways are in need of constant update to stay relevant to business and industry demands. These are invaluable training programs for those youth who are headed straight into the workforce after high school, and they're also incredibly valuable experience-building opportunities. Which foster a sense of direction for those students choosing to attend a post-secondary institution. As the slides move past there on screen, and and maybe we could back up a couple, there was a roster showing there, there should be a roster showing. The seventeen voting members of the advisory committee, so there on screen is is a portion of us, and I think maybe Stacy mentioned that that roster was handed out in print to the board. If not, we can get you all a copy. But there's seventeen voting members on the advisory committee, and we represent a large range of careers and occupational fields. The committee meets quarterly throughout the year and has presented informational sessions at the Mid-America Workforce Summit and the Kansas Association for Career and Technical Education. The true purpose of our committee is to provide business and industry a unified voice to advocate and provide continuous improvement for career and technical education to the State Board of Ed, the Kansas Post-Secondary Tech Ed Authority. And the State Workforce Board as well as the Board of Regents. So as you look on screen, you you see a member, a member group here of our of our committee, and and like many of these committee members. I really want to give back to the community, and one of the ways I choose to do that is to provide support for pathways. Pathway experiences that make sense to students in their world. In the the following slides is a quick and brief overview of my time personally as a student here in Kansas. In my career in technical education path, because truly for me, when I was in high school, reading meant studying a repair manual. And understanding how to fix something. And science to me was understanding stoichiometry as it related to air fuel ratios on gasoline engines. And math, well, math was it was Ohm's Law and understanding how current and resistance and voltage work together to make an electrical circuit function. And my path to success was rooted in work-based learning. I've had a blessed career, none of which would have been possible without strong mentors, incredibly supportive parents, and work-based learning that I'm so proud to be here and and support. So the opportunity to really explore this experience while students grow socially and emotionally will make a difference by helping them connect with a world that's often overwhelming. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Stacy. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you very much. And here to update the board on the actions and activities that the five pilot schools have been piloting. Through scaling high-quality work-based learning is. Education Program Consultant and IPS Coordinator Natalie Clark.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. I would like to tell you a little bit about our scaling high-quality work-based learning pilot. And this screen shows the five workforce regions. In region one, our pilot district is Cupidton two ten. In region two, Manhattan USD three eighty three. In region three, De Soto two thirty two. Region four, Circle three seventy five. And in region five, we have a cohort of two districts, Iola two fifty seven and Chanute District four thirteen. The Kansas Work-Based Learning Continuum, we have shared with you before. And we use this continuum to challenge our pilot districts to make sure that students, all students had experiences across the continuum. Beginning with career awareness. We had each district inventory based upon this elementary model. How many students are you exposing in career awareness activities and introducing them to the seven career fields? Career exploration, looking at these different experiences, and how many middle school students are getting the opportunity to have these types of experiences? And get introduced to the sixteen career clusters. And then finally, career preparation, looking at internships, youth registered apprenticeships, simulated work-based learning experiences, entrepreneurship and service. Thing, how many of your students are getting an introduction, an experience to apply their technical skills in the career pathways? And so we did that inventory so that schools can plan and know how many students are getting these experiences so that they can grow. And so at the end of the pilot, we can see how many students were. Being offered these experiences across the continuum. And now I want to tell you a little bit about each region. In each region, we have set up a regional intermediary network. We have someone from the Kansas State Department of Education and Education Program Consultant working in each region. The Kansas Department of Commerce has hired a full-time work-based learning intermediary to work with that particular district. And then within the school district, we have a work-based learning coordinator. Kansas Board of Regents has given each school district in the region a contact with a community or a technical college that they'll work directly with. And the Department of Labor has provided labor market information statewide. And the Department of Labor has provided labor market information statewide, as well as regionally, and it's sortable by cluster. So this information is being shared with educators, parents, and students. And I'm going to take you inside Region 1. Bill Losi is the Work-Based Learning Coordinator. We had our first meeting with the pilot schools, January 7. Most schools were in session until about March 16. So they were in the buildings for 10 weeks prior to continuous learning. This is a picture of six teachers that were trained. They purchased Z-Space virtual augmented reality units, and these six teachers were trained via Zoom in the world that they're living in at this time. So teachers in health and bioscience purchased Vivid anatomy software. They purchased Newton's Lab so that they could utilize STEM for students to experiment. And Leopoli was purchased, so students who are interested in design and graphic arts could send creations to 3D printers. So thinking about, in Hugaton, no matter where you're at in Kansas, introducing teachers and students to this type of technology. Bill Losi, the Work-Based Learning Coordinator, challenged the students to create a business. So the students researched businesses and traveled to Garden City, decided to start Cloud Nine Coffee Shop. The students wrote a business plan. They pitched that plan to their Board of Education. They took out a loan. All the students who were working in the coffee shop took the Serve Safe certification, and they launched their business in February. This is an example of FBLA, the Career and Technical Student Organization. They created an adulting day. It was in partnership with Workforce One, who presented More Ways to Win Workshop. So they separated the students. If the students were in the Workforce One session, they had a presentation that identified the careers in the local Hugaton community that required different levels of education. And that information included what the work environment would look like, salary ranges, and cost of education. The FBLA students organized business and industry to come in and partner. So some of the different experiences that were coordinated were legal assistance, insurance, budgeting, CPR, informed voter taxes, applying for loans, checking and savings accounts. This is a picture of Bill Losi, the Work-Based Learning Coordinator in Hugaton. And he is sharing the work-based learning pilot opportunity with his site council. And on that site council, including parents and business and industries from that particular community. And he asked them what was most important as far as the students coming out of Hugaton High School as an employee, a prospective employee. And they said employability skills were the most important as far as what they were looking for to improve. Seward County Community College has been a great partner for Pilot One. Bill had arranged a trip for parents and students to get on a school bus and travel to Seward County Community College to be aware of the programs that were offered and the occupations available in the region. That was canceled, but they continued with a virtual tour. So educators, parents, and students were able to virtually connect with all the different programs at Seward County Community College, take a tour inside that space, learn about the equipment, the programs, and how that related to jobs in that particular area. We asked the students to inventory their individual plan of study process, and Hugaton decided that next year, they are creating a template for every student, grade 7 through 12. They're partnering with Dr. Robert Moody at Ford Hay State University. So each student will have a template to create a live document that will carry through from 7th through 12th grade, all those components that are recommended for electronic portfolio to take with them after they graduate. Building Bridges is an event that's put on by Kansas Workforce One. They had planned to have that April 28. They were going to have Youth Registered Apprenticeship Lead, Chastity Troxel with Department of Commerce, Kansas State Department of Education, Hugaton Chamber of Commerce, and businesses in the area. They have postponed that until this coming school year. So that's an insight into Hugaton. I'm now going to switch to Region 2, Manhattan. Manhattan, this was an article, WIBW. They had a first-ever Explore Career and Technical Education Day at Manhattan High School, where they brought in the middle school educators and students. And the students at Manhattan High School told them about the different career pathways. A student designed a T-shirt, and it was all led by students that day. They have been having business and industry tours. This shows they visited Timberline Tours, students interested in that particular industry. What's interesting about Manhattan is they have a work-based learning committee. It includes career and technical education teachers. However, it also includes a science teacher. It includes a Spanish teacher, a special education teacher. So the Spanish teacher arranged for Spanish-speaking students to travel to Manhattan area technical college. And something that they have devised going forward for next year is when we look at the continuum, keeping track of all the different buildings and the opportunities for career awareness at the elementary, exploration at middle school, and preparation at high school. They have created an inventory so that they will log the experiences and count the number of students, that they make sure that those students are having those experiences going forward. Now, I'd like to show you a little bit about Region 3, De Soto. Dr. Cindy Schwartz is the Work-Based Learning Coordinator. What's a little bit different about their work-based learning team that's going to be continuing to meet throughout this summer is they have an elementary team, a middle school team, and a high school team. And this is what they did in the elementary. They had a career day. They exposed the students to seven or eight different career fields. And then they said, how does that tie to the subjects that you are taking and you're most interested in? This is a sample of what they did in the middle school in continuous learning. They wanted to focus on the non-traditional career. So this was a Zoom that they had with eighth-grade female students. They had a news acre from Cape News chat with those eighth-grade students talking about news anchoring and ethical news reporting. And opportunity for their high school. They are building a new career academy in De Soto, and they are going to be part of the National CAPS Network. So May 11 through the 14th, their high school students had the opportunity to participate in Virtual Career Week. And traveling now to Region 4, Circle USD 375. Some of the experiences that they've had, Kansas Works presented to the sophomores. There was 90 sophomores that completed the Essential Skills Certification. Some of those areas that they studied, workplace etiquette, money handling, keys to employment, and customer service. During that particular day, they also took a campus tour of Butler Community College, which is their post-secondary partner in this intermediary network in the area. One of the goals that they have in their particular region 4, Circle wants to become an ACT work-ready community. So they're focusing on their students taking the ACT Work Keys Suite of Assessments. Because of this, Holly Frontier is a major employer in that particular region. And when you go in for a job interview in this particular business, you have to show your NCRC, or you have to have taken the Work Keys Suite of Assessments, want to prepare their students, and they want to have a career fair next school year, invite other businesses, and have the students have their resume, as well as their National Career Readiness Certificate, to introduce to not only Holly Frontier, but also other businesses in their particular area. They have a strong partnership with their Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development, and this is part of their goal for next year. Region 5, Cohort Districts Iola and Chanute. They started with a meeting, a joint meeting. They brought in elected officials, business and industry educators, and they talked about bridging the gap between education and industry. This is an article that was in the Iola Register. They had an intern placed at Precision International, an Iola company that manufactures parts and equipment for the oilfield industry. And this is a picture of the student, the CNC machine. And something that they're looking forward to next year, they are also purchasing some AR/VR equipment. They're going to look at manufacturing and industrial maintenance, because that was a need that was brought out of that community meeting. The Blue Comets, Chanute, and Iola are going to partner with Neosho County Community College. They're going to prepare a building in Chanute. The students who are interested in manufacturing will come from both high schools, partner with Neosho County Community College, and they'll work on that particular manufacturing industrial mechanics. Horizon, the company that's pictured here, is also a partner. And next school year, they plan to visit with other businesses in the region that might be interested in partnering in this particular partnership also. So that's a little bit into what our schools have done when they were in the districts for 10 weeks and then continuous learning. We hope, we plan for these school districts to present at our summer conference and present to other schools in their region to tell them about what they're doing to scale high-quality work-based learning. We listened to you last year talking about professional development for work-based learning coordinators. We have talked with Teacher Lysenger about a possible micro-credential. So from April 15 through May 20, we had weekly three-and-a-half-hour sessions on professional development topics we felt were important for coordinators to be introduced to. So Department of Education, Kansas Department of Commerce, Kansas Board of Regents, Kansas Department of Labor, the U.S. Department of Labor and Federal Child Labor Laws, and Department of Children and Families and Pre-Employment Transition Services. We all came together and presented content. We have created a work-based learning digital reference guide. It's on proof 5, which I think we're nearing the final proof, but it has links to 98 different resources, both KSDE-created, as well as those other state or federal partnering agencies. So this is just a look at what it will look like. But we're getting the feedback from the pilot work-based learning coordinators that went through this training so that we can continue this training and proceed with scaling work-based learning in Kansas. So thank you for allowing us to share a little bit about what we have done with the work-based learning pilot schools. I'd like to thank the pilot schools and the partnering agencies across the state of Kansas, because everyone has really stepped up, and I think we're proud of their accomplishments. Thank you. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're back on full screen with everybody. First of all, to Natalie and Stacy, thank you for your presentation. And Bob and Jack, you've changed a little bit since middle school. I didn't recognize you.
My hair has gotten much thinner since middle school.
I hadn't noticed. But I'm glad you said something. That's always fun to see former students, even on Zoom. So
Yes, ma'am.
Some great work. This is incredible work that's going on. And I'm sure board members are going to have some questions after you came to us last year. So board members? Okay, Ann Ma.
Okay. Yeah, thank you guys for your presentation. I was able to attend all of the work-based learning training sessions, and they were amazing. I mean, I know it was a ton of information, but Stacy and Natalie and everybody really put a ton of work into this. And I think that our pilot schools are going to be really well-prepared to launch this year. So thank you guys for your work. It's very exciting stuff.
We have appreciated your support, Member Ma, and have noticed you being present and have worked hard to try to earn that confidence. Don't think of work-based learning as one more thing that we're taking on, because this really aligns quite well with the individual plan of study. And it also greatly reflects your ambitions around real-world application as a part of school redesign. So we see this as a manifestation of the work that has been underway for quite a while. If I were to replay those slides in my head, the one that I stick on is Iola, where Superintendent Fager has pulled all those people around that table. And what he's got is he's got business and industry partners gathered there with school staff to talk about serving the needs of students. And it's developing those kind of relationships at the local level and just providing the leadership within those schools, the emphasis and the opportunity to change some of the discussions. For too many years, our parents, you know, really looked at that four-year degree as the only solution or measure of success for students. And there are associate's degrees out there. There are real-world credentials that students can earn. So just encouraging a broader conversation that empowers people to be able to navigate those decisions, that's what's important to us. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, board members? Okay, Jean Clifford? Go ahead, Jean.
Yes, I just wanted to say that as I've traveled around my district, I've noticed that so many students were interested in careers that were involving technical or vocational skills and that this work-based learning fits so well into what their desires are for their future education. And I'd really like to thank all of the people that were involved in it, and especially Mr. Kreitzer and Hugaton, which are in my district. So this is a great opportunity for all of our students, and it'll really bring a lot of economic benefits to our state when these students enter the workforce. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean. Any further questions, board members? Okay, well, again, thanks. Janet, did you have a question? Nope. Okay. Board members, thank you so much for listening to this great presentation. Thank you to all the people who took a little time today to join us. It's obviously very important work and much needed for our kids, our students, when they get out there. Jean said it perfectly, as far as opportunities for them to have some experience before they get out and decide what it is they want to do with their lives and to have some actual experience. So I'm sure we'll be hearing back from you at some point in time in the future as far as how everything else continues to go. So thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item, item number 18, is information from Hayesville USD 261 on Link Recess Program. And it looks like Brad's going to get us started, and I see John Burke on also. So there you are, Brad. So welcome.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and board members. We've been visiting with Dr. John Burke in Hayesville over the past several months about research-based innovative, I'm just going to say a recess program, but this isn't, I don't think, what you would consider your traditional recess. And it, in some ways, challenges a little bit of what we think about what old recess used to be, and this program that Dr. Burke's going to share. And as they implement this as an agency, we will be working with them and just kind of monitoring the positive effects out of this. And there could be, down the road, looking at this, some effects of maybe some policy changes that we look at, you know, that may affect all districts as we go through this. So we wanted to invite the Hayesville District and Dr. Burke just to share with the State Board something that they're going to be working on for the next few years and sharing back data to us. So, Dr. Burke?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Commissioner Watson. It's a privilege for USD 261 to work with you today and address you. With me today are Assistant Superintendent for Learning Services Jennifer Reed and Ruth Clark Elementary School Principal Carla Wolf. Our district is constantly searching for innovative practices that we can adopt. And one of the places that we look for that is a group in Washington, DC called the Education Advisory Board, also known as EAB. And every year, they do two in-depth studies to help And every year, they do two in-depth studies to help K-12 education. And the one, two years ago, was how to handle disruptive students in the early grades. So as we were working our way through that program, I noticed that there was a program in Texas that allowed their elementary schools to have up to four 15-minute recesses per day. Current audit regulations in Kansas allow for us to count up to two 15-minute recesses during the day. So in looking at adopting this program, it's going to cost us a little bit in terms of school time. We've got enough built in that if we don't have too many snow days, we won't get into trouble. We sent a team of teachers and administrators down to Texas to a couple of the schools, and they observed this firsthand and talked to the administrators there and found out that as a result of this program, student achievement was way up, office discipline referrals were way down, and wellness was increased significantly for these students. Jim Porter, I realize you won't believe this, but 40 years ago, I was an elementary principal. And 40 years ago, we had this same policy of up to two 15-minute recesses per day. And that was before wellness was invented as a word. So we're interested in pursuing this, and we think it's going to really take off and help the students and the teachers in our district. And I want to turn this over to Jennifer Reed, and she's got a presentation that she's going to get more in-depth with you on this. So Jennifer, you're on.
Good afternoon. I'm going to share my screen. All right. Can everybody see that? Can you see the recess? All right, the presentation. So I'm going to go into present mode. And we actually are going to call it recess. We came up with an acronym. Kansas is full of acronyms. Well, education is full of acronyms. So why shouldn't this be any different? And we thought recess would stand for Recreation, Engagement, Communication, Exploration, Social, Emotional, and Success. So the purpose is kind of twofold for this recess. And one of them is, of course, academics. So we want to allot students more time to be active during their day to be more engaged in turn in the classroom. So it'll exemplify the idea that the classroom is where new instruction really takes place. And by giving them additional recess time outside, they won't be using that time in the classroom, which would increase engagement. We're also focusing on the social-emotional portion of recess, and this would be the application piece of our Second Step program. Currently, we use Second Step pre-K through eight, which is a social-emotional learning curriculum that we explicitly teach skills like empathy and problem solving throughout the year to our students. So by providing additional recess time, these students will have the opportunity to apply those pieces. So we added some cute little pictures here that we believe play is the highest expression of human development in childhood. For it alone is the free expression of what is in a child's soul. So as a district, we came up with some guidelines that we would like to train our teachers in, and our administrators have learned these as well. So beginning next year, K-1 students will be given four 15-minute recesses daily. Now, our intention from here is to add a grade level per year. So we're going to start with K-1, then add second the following year, third, and so on, until we get all the way through fifth grade. We wanted to roll it out this way because our K-1 students will now know school no differently. So they will always know school as this is how it's run, and it won't be that big of a change for everybody. Though we do have some schools that are ready to go all-in right now. Students will have recess after 45 to 60 minutes of instruction. So that means they're not sitting longer than 45 to 60 minutes before they can get up and move around and get that blood pumping. Recesses are linked to instructional time only. So we are taking the lunch recess out of the equation. So they're building in the schedule a longer lunch period, but they will not go out to recess before or after lunch. It's strictly designed to be in-between instructional periods so that they can come back ready to learn and be engaged. And then our restroom and drink breaks will be taken by those as they exit the building. So we're actually cutting down on transition time because when we start the 15 minutes of recess, those students that need a restroom and drink break will take that within that time, and then they'll come right back to learn. So children cannot bounce off the walls if we take away the walls. And that's, in essence, what we're doing. We're taking away the walls. So for teachers, there's actually kind of a structure with this. So before we start, teachers are going to explicitly teach the recess procedures because they are going to be a little bit different from what we traditionally know recess to be. There's going to be a timer. So one teacher will be in charge of the 15-minute time. And they will start timing students as soon as the very first student leaves the classroom and gets into the hallway. The time for the 15-minute starts. One teacher will be the sweeper, and that teacher will be the last one out of the building. So that sweeper stays behind as the classes are being dismissed outside. With the timer, the sweeper stays behind and then make sure that all of the students get out of the restrooms and gets their drinks and then moves on outside. So they'll be the last one out of the building. Equipment, this will be new for them. We will not be allowing jump ropes and balls and all of that stuff to be taken outside. We believe that that can lead to more problems than it would solve, and we really want to encourage imaginative play. So we're going to be without any equipment besides the recess equipment that they can climb in is already out there. We'll have a door opener. So as soon as that whistle blows, there's going to be a teacher assigned at the door that will hold the door open. And as kids start to enter, that will shift, and a kid will hold the door open so teachers can be in the hallways monitoring students as they come back in to go to work. And then one of the changes that we're making is we're not going to be blowing a whistle and having students freeze. As soon as that whistle blows, students are coming right back into the classroom, sitting down and getting ready to learn. There's no restroom and drink breaks, and teachers are coming right back in and starting teaching right away. So that's going to be a huge change that teachers are going to need to practice with their students. So the recreation part. Students are going to go outside to recess, weather permitting, as much as possible. Not only did we see that students were loving this, that teachers were also loving it, too. It really helps with the teacher wellness program as well. No equipment, so no balls, no jump ropes. And then we want to attempt to have two recesses on the equipment and then two recesses without any equipment. So what we observed was there were a couple of recesses that were kind of out in like a field, and kids were encouraged to develop games and run and play and just really be imaginative, which we think we, you know, kind of lost that with the kids. Technology just gives them everything and doesn't leave anything to the imagination. So we're encouraging principals to schedule recesses where there's a couple times during the day when they don't even have equipment to play with, and they have to interact with each other and be imaginative and come up with their own games. Engagement. So again, we're going to be using our imaginations as much as possible. Students will have the opportunity to practice Second Step lessons. That can be something that the teachers reinforce as they're teaching the Second Step lessons as, hey, when you go outside today, I want you to show empathy for a student that might be playing alone and go over and make a friend. So this can be a way to really engage those lessons and apply them. And then one of our elementary PE teachers' motto is "Active Kids Do Better." So students are going to be more engaged in class because they're active and they're going to do better. Their blood's going to be pumping, and they'll be ready to learn. Communication. So for students, we want them to interact with each other as much as possible. For teachers, they're going to have designated areas on the playground or wherever they have recess. They'll have designated areas to sit and/or to stand and monitor students so they won't be clumped together talking. They're going to be monitoring student interaction. And then if there's conflict, we're going to encourage the teachers not to solve that problem. They're going to mediate the students as they work through that conflict, which, again, we'll be using those Second Step techniques. Exploration. We want the kids to imagine. We want them to talk. We want them to create. So many times they get bored, we want to allow them to get bored. And instead of putting a piece of technology in place or telling them to go watch TV, we're going to allow them to create their own games, and we're going to encourage that. So we're actually going to shift some of that mindset that they've grown up with. Social, emotional. Again, we're going to reinforce that second step, and we're going to encourage student interaction as much as possible and then facilitate the problem-solving so they're not going to go to the teachers with the problem. They might initially go there, and then the teacher will be the mediator as they come to a solution. And then finally, success. We're going to explicitly teach those recess procedures because not only is it going to be different for students, it's different for teachers. So they have to be trained as well. We're going to practice, practice, practice. Practice makes permanent. That's what we like to say here. It may not make perfect, but it does make permanent. We're going to celebrate successes, and then we're going to have to reteach when necessary. So when we have long breaks, when we come back, we're going to have to reteach those procedures and get started again. So the advantages, we believe that recess is going to help in Hazle, is we're going to increase attention during instruction. We're going to have improved academics. And we're also going to have increased attendance. Students are going to want to come when they know that they're getting four recesses a day. Then they're not going to be just getting that sit-and-get. We're hoping for improved social-emotional skills, and with that interaction, I'm sure that's going to happen. It's increased health benefits for students. As again, "Active Kids Do Better." And one thing that we noticed when we were in Texas, we were counting how many students would be considered overweight or obese, and that had actually gone down a lot. So not that we would be having the kids weigh, but I mean, you can kind of see it with the activity and improved focus on academics in the afternoon. Two of those recesses are going to be in the afternoon. So you can have math or reading in the afternoon because those students are going to be outside and playing and getting that blood pumping, and you can go right in to learn. And then we're hoping to have decreased office discipline referrals. So we think outdoor play is among the greatest gifts we can give our children. Have healthy, adventurous, and curious children who are among the greatest gifts that we can give back to the community. So we want to restore balance and add a pinch of adventure, a sprinkle of green time, and a big handful of play in Hazle. So thank you very much for your time and listening to us, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Really appreciate. It's going to be very interesting to see how this goes. Now, John, you're going to have to invite me down.
Of course.
And I know Carla will. So I would love to come down once you kind of got it going and stuff. Interesting concept. I'll be anxious to get feedback from you as far as when you get it implemented. Board members, do we have questions? Mr. Porter, go ahead. You're on.
Thank you, John. I was a high school principal 40 years ago, but I'm older than you are, so. There are places that use lack of recess as a punishment. I assume you're not going to do that.
No.
I'm glad to hear that. That's it.
It's important.
Ben Jones. Ben, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In that conversation, I never heard how you were integrating the... If you have, I'm not familiar with the Hazle District or the campus district. I apologize. But how do you integrate what we deem specials? To me, they're core subjects, but music and PE at the elementary level, are they integrated in this? Are they integrated in it? And how do they fit into this piece?
At the elementary level, we do have four specials. We have 30 minutes of PE, 30 minutes of music, usually two times a week, too. And then every other week, they get three. I think Fridays switch. And then we have technology and we have library. Those are integrated. I mean, we're not taking any time away from them by any means. So our PE teachers are super, duper excited about this extra activity that we're putting into place. So we're not taking anything away from them. We're going to continue on with that scheduling, so they'll still get their time. One thing that is different, though, is we are encouraging... We're going to have teachers go out to all of these recesses. In some of the... In the past, in some other districts, too, they send paras out to recess. And so this is going to be a change for the teachers because they're actually going to get out there, but they're going to get to know their students a whole lot better, too.
And one of the good things is we can then redeploy the paras to help academics in other parts of the building.
Other questions? Okay, well, seeing none. John, thank you. Jennifer, thank you. And I see Carla down there on the screen. I don't see your picture, but hi, Carla.
Hi.
Thank you for your presentation. And like I say, we'll be interested to hear how things go. And this today, my understanding, Brad, was an information item, correct? Just nod if that's correct. Okay, there we go.
We thought this was something that we would want the board to hear about because it's definitely something as an agency we'll be following, but there was nothing to approve or down the road. But like we said, this could very much inform policy down the road when we look at, you know, auditing time.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, thanks all for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're going to go to Agenda Item 19, which is consent. So do we have a motion to approve consent? Deana Horst makes the motion, the second. Okay, Jean Clifford, thank you. Sometimes it's hard to see in these little rectangles. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for consent. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, and thank you opposed. Okay, it'd be 9-0 with Steve Roberts is not in. Okay, we next are going to the chairman's report. Some committees that I know of that have been, happened recently. The Virtual and Charter School Advisory Committee. Michelle, I believe that was yours. Do you have any kind of report on that? Let's see, just a second. We're trying to get you unmuted. There you go, Michelle. Go ahead, please.
Those were the Virtual Charter Schools, correct? We just met the other day. I'm going to pass on the notes. There was a gal that was taking notes, and I'm going to pass those on to Peggy. We really didn't have anything. There wasn't a lot brought up. There are a few things that were brought up, but not a lot. They knew that, like, because 259, they were talking about the accreditation process. We talked about that a little bit. And then we talked about reaching out to the committees and the subcommittees that are working on having some of those people on that committee or in a subcommittee to work on getting the kids back to school and transitioning. And for those who are wanting to learn or educate from a distance, how, you know, accountability, sit time, all that kind of stuff. How do they work through that? So that was one of my suggestions. Then we do have a couple people that were on in virtual schools. So that was going to work out well.
Okay, good.
To just kind of give input. So that's one thing we talked about.
And it's not on here, but has the vaping group anything that you guys have been working on?
Yeah, I was just thinking about that today as far as like when you say future agenda items. With the kids not being in school, I'll be anxious to see when they get back to school if there's been, you know, any type of parents that are seeing more of that, seeing more anxiety, just seeing more vaping just because they're with their parents a lot more. I'd be anxious to see how that goes when they get back into school because we, right now, don't really... We don't really know a lot because they're not in the schools.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Confidence in Public Education. Janet, anything to report? Wait a minute, need to get you unmuted. Can we unmute Janet? Nope, not yet.
It hit that.
Okay, there you are. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we did meet. We discussed basically things that we're doing, Friends of Education and Governor's Scholars, which we obviously couldn't do. You know, I think they did. They put out a press release on it, you know. And we discussed the Challenge Awards and, you know... But I told them what we all did because obviously everyone did it a little bit differently, you know. So hopefully, next year, we'll be a different animal. Yep, okay. Also, stick with you, Janet. Casey, anything on Casey?
Yes, we met... When did we meet? Was it just a couple of days ago? I think it was Monday we met. I've been in so many meetings. Yes, we've met, when did we meet? Was it just a couple of days ago? I think it was Monday we met. I've been in so many meetings, I can't believe how many meetings I've been in. Or maybe last Friday. Yes, they, they worked on a statement to put, to release regarding regarding integration, you know, racism. And they worked on that. And of course they were working on various programs that they have. They've done several Zoom things, you know, with the zoos and all kinds of stuff to offer opportunities for kids. So they're working on all kinds of opportunities and of course, as everyone else is looking forward to being back in school.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, coordinating council, Jean, you and I met on that. Do you want to report? We'll get you unmuted. Okay, go ahead.
Well, we had a, a pretty full meeting and I did put it in my activities report this, this time. But some of the ideas that were brought up were aligning spring breaks. Let's see. We approved the charter, which was one of the initial things that we needed to do. Developing an online resource page to list post-secondary courses that high school students might participate in. Surveys for high school students to help in planning. Developing common advisory committees for CTE programs and then some issues relating to COVID-19. So all of those things were discussed and I think we'll be working on some of them and moving forward on those. But I, I have to say that I think this is really the right way to go, that we really need to align ourselves, not just with, you know, the business and industry, but with higher education as well. And we'll get quite a bit done and, and it'll help the students quite a bit. So I'm getting dings here, so I think I'll mute myself.
Okay, I might add one other thing. We had a little bit of conversation, not much, but about Kbor is putting together a webinar for I guess it's high schools districts, but primarily high schools about the qualified admissions and the changes for that. Now they're not going to have that available until a little while yet because I checked with Randy and Randy checked about the possibility when that webinar is available. Some of us might want to be on it just to kind of see what they're saying to the schools about, about their change as far as qualified admissions. And that's going to bring me to something else under the chairman's report, but I'll bring that up in a minute. That's all of the coordinating council information, or excuse me, the committee reports that I have. Does anybody have a committee report that they went to that I missed? Anne Ma?
I sent one of Peggy, I don't know if it was sent on our packets or where, but I had a report includes information on K A C C T E, the last meeting and some other things I'm working on. So I won't repeat that, but it should be in your folder somewhere.
Okay, so look in your folders for that. Thank you, Anne. Anybody else? Okay, Mark, if you would update us, I think you might have an update on the negotiations with the school for the deaf. Michelle, I know mentioned a little bit about it. Anything you want to update us with?
I sent out a, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I did send out a, a quick little email to board this morning when we started the board meeting, just to give you a specific date of the previous meeting where we had a Zoom meeting with both TNEA reps and the, and the administration and we had a very productive session. As you can imagine, with interpreters and a number of people involved, you know, it moved slowly, but we had a very cordial and collegial meeting in in May. And we have a follow-up on Monday, the twenty ninth, we have a follow-up Zoom meeting. And all of those issues are going to be dealt with in three different ways. One would be either through a super superintendent's work group by agreement or we'll negotiate. And I, I don't have any reason to believe that there's anything that's particularly problematic, just need to work through some of those issues. Some, some are laying groundwork for future, you know, for future issues and, and addressing adjustments to supplemental contract pay and some routine matters related to just adjusting the salary schedule to, to meet the Olathe school district salary schedule. So we're moving forward on that and hopefully have something to bring in July more substantive. The other thing is, is you'll get tomorrow morning, most likely, just to let you know, you'll see it on my monthly report, but I spent quite a bit of time with the school for the blind on a personnel matter. That's a civil service appeal. And then also a charge of discrimination by a former employee. And we have a mediation scheduled on Thursday this week by Zoom and been working with with John Harding and Theresa Chandler on that. And I'll give you a, the best way to report will give, be to give you a copy of the mediation statement that we submit to the mediator. It'll be pretty lengthy and detailed. It's well under control, but it's just taking a, a long time, a process because you've got both charges of discrimination and retaliation and also the appeal before the civil service board by an employee. And so that'll give you a comprehensive update and summary of the status of that. Otherwise, if you have to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Seeing none, we'll move along. Okay, request for future agenda items. Ben Jones? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to reiterate my earlier item with talking about process and product with KISA. But also a conversation with CTE about what the federal regulations are and what the state regulations are that our people have to go through and where they differ and why we have this presentation on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Other requests for future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to the chairman's report. Speaking in reference back to what I mentioned earlier about the coordinating council meeting and the qualified admissions, as we all know, and we've talked about it at a previous meeting, Kbor has made the decision to not have the qualified admissions and Randy will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe their admissions now will be based on grade point average and ACT. I think it's those only two and I see him nodding his head, so I'm pretty sure I'm right. So as, as we do that, there's been some conversation among some board members about do we need as a K-12 entity to talk about? Are there things that we need to look at maybe within our graduation requirements? To make certain that we have our students who are fully prepared for that post-secondary experience. So what I'd like to do is to assign a I don't know if it's ad hoc, but a temporary committee that would study that item and kind of take a look at that and see if there's any recommendations they might bring to the board. So I've got a few people I'm going to request to be on that, three board members. Jim McNeese, Anne Ma, Jim Porter. And then we'll get a Kbor member, Randy can help with that. And then also look at a, a two high school principals to kind of study this. And this will be kind of a short term, I don't know how short term, but a short term committee that will get together and work on this and then bring a report to the board. If they see anything, any recommendations they think they need to bring to us, suggestions, that kind of information, I think would be helpful for the board to have. So we'll move forward with that. And Randy, if you kind of want to coordinate and then everybody can kind of get a first meeting set up, I'm sure you guys will get to do another Zoom meeting. So yay, everybody's excited. I can see the grins. So we'll, we'll move forward with that. Okay, tomorrow again, we'll be on Zoom. As you all know, we'll start at nine. We have a, mainly it's a couple of just big topics for tomorrow. We are going to be talking about the reintegration plan. And I just want to re-emphasize on the reintegration plan. We are looking at, and I know we've all had emails from folks talking about schools starting back and, you know, people encouraging and, and I mean, I think I speak for the entire board where we really want the kids back in our brick and mortar schools come August. Now, we know things could happen with COVID. We know that and we're preparing for that. But our goal certainly is to have our children and our teachers and our schools open come August, whatever framework. It's always different from district to district. So we'll have a big discussion on that tomorrow. And then we're also going to have legislative matters. And one of the things within the legislative matters, this is the time of year we begin to look at the next budget. And remember, we make a recommendation. Most of the time, recommendation doesn't go anywhere, but there was a year or two ago, the governor did take our recommendation and go move forward with that. So we are going to make a recommend, this will be a preliminary discussion for the recommendation. We won't vote on it tomorrow, but we will be in the near future. So, and on your agenda, there was a PowerPoint. So if you want to review that before the meeting tomorrow, again, you certainly can feel free to do so. And then we'll discuss any legislative educational legislation that was in the legislature this year. So that'll be, we will also have an executive session tomorrow. So that will be what we'll have tomorrow. So I'd like to move on to board member travel. I think probably, has anybody got anything else they need to give to Peggy? For travel. Jean?
Sure, exactly what I need to do because it is mentioned in, in the travel that I have. But the learning for the future subcommittee will be at ten meetings. They started yesterday, probably two to three hours apiece throughout the month of June. So it'll, it's supposed to be Monday, Wednesday and Friday throughout June and then possibly a little bit more. So I wanted to see if I can request three days of salary for just the learning for the future part of it.
Okay. Other people? Travel request. Deana?
I just want to make sure that because I can't pull up the, the travel on my iPad. For some reason, it's showing me bunches of little dots instead of letters. So I don't know what it says. Anyway, I sent an email to Peggy about I had watched the the committee. The education committee, budget education committee meeting. Others were on Zoom, so I messaged until after the meeting was over that I could have done that. But anyway, I noticed all of you had asked for salary and I hadn't even thought about doing that. So I emailed Peggy about that today. So I wondered if she'd already added it or if I needed to have you add that.
Well, I'm sure if she hasn't, she can do that now. Others? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion to approve travel? Okay, Jim Porter, second. Michelle Dombrowski, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed. Okay, nine zero with Steve Roberts not here. Okay, all righty. Well, board members, that concludes our meeting today and it's a good thing because my computer battery is saying that it's about out. So but thank you all for today. Good, long meeting, kind of hard to sit and watch you all on Zoom, but we did it and we'll be back tomorrow at nine o'clock for our mainly two major topics. So thank you all. We'll see you tomorrow.